A number of veterans' names to add there from, I think even going back to the Persian Gulf War.
Oh, okay.
And certainly in the local, yeah, the local, the more recent Iraq and Afghanistan
Okay.
conflicts. So they're hoping to gather enough money over the next few years. It's fairly expensive to, and we actually will probably need another section of the wall. And they have to have a stone person come in to engrave those names. So that's what that's for. We have a payroll warrant, payroll warrant number 14, in the amount of $20,677.28. Motion to approve?
Let's go move.
Second.
All right, Carl and Mitch. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything that appears on the agenda?
I might have one with 8A because I was involved with some of those zonings that are, we put in articles about.
Mm-hmm.
So I would either leave the table or refrain, or I think I could be unbiased, but I don't want a perception of...
Is that as it concerns the whole discussion, Mitch, or just one portion of that discussion?
I was involved with both of them.
Okay.
Just the 8A.
Okay. Anyone else?
Nope.
All right. So no to thank you, Mitch. Any announcements?
No.
Nothing from the, any public comments?
Yes, I have.
All right. Would you like to come up to the table?
Oh, okay. I'll just get your comfortable back here.
Oh, well, that's a comfy chair. You'll be all right.
That's a feat.
Oh, no, we won't let you fall asleep.
I was wondering, when we have situations where...
I'm sorry, could you just state your name for the record?
Okay. Bob Moffat?
Sean will need it. Thanks, Bob.
Of things going on, things are done, and then somebody discovers later that something was done wrong, it wasn't gone by the procedures the statutes call for.
Mm-hmm.
I went online and I got a list, complete list, of all the Vermont statutes.
Mm-hmm.
And you look up what you want to find out, like Act 250, the applications, and it tells you which statue to go to to find the information on that.
Mm-hmm.
Same thing with, like, we were talking about the constables.
Mm-hmm.
It has that in there. So maybe having a copy of this laying around so that when Select Board, the Planning Commission, whoever decides, okay, let's do this, wait a minute, let's look that up, oh, we need to go by this statue to cover that, so we CYA, if you pardon the expression.
Mm-hmm. We all use that expression.
That's, that's what I got.
Let me take a, can I take a peek at that, Bob?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's municipal...
Let me just make sure I'm clear on what you want, Bob.
Well...
I think he's just offering this as a, frankly, as a tool.
So when you're doing something...
Municipal index is what it, what it is.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great, because I didn't know it came in that, you printed the whole thing out, which is great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you found that online?
Yeah. Called Secretary of State.
Mm-hmm.
Now, there's a section on here of closing highways, like you talk about Greens Road there.
Yep.
There's a statute for closing highways, then there's discontinuing highways, procedures, title to right-of-way, notifying forest and parks, it depends upon the road, what it is. That way, because, I'm going to jump ahead a little bit, but like on Greens Road, I as I understand, there's a house at the end of the road.
Mm-hmm.
Who owns before that house?
Well, that's, apparently, there are a couple of property owners involved with that property, as I understand it.
Okay.
I'm not sure who it is, but...
We have two parties.
We have, we have two...
That have to be notified.
A budding, or, yeah.
Yeah. We have Elwell, about that, West, Keith and Lillian West.
Because according to the statutes, the people at the end of the road have to be given the title of right-of-way. So the other people can't say, well, the town gave it up, so you own to this half of the road, I own to this half of the road, she can't get through.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a thing in the statute about going through Superior Court, so it gives her the title for right-of-way, minimum of three rods.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's, that's helpful, that's helpful information. It certainly is.
Because I don't want to see that, you know, we're going to do this, fine, that's it, and then somebody says, well, wait a minute now, how's she going to get out to the town road because you and I own to the middle of the road? She doesn't have a way out.
Mm-hmm.
Or to be a conflict, you're saying, no, you take it from your side of the road, and I say, no, you take it from your side of the road, and only give her, maybe, say, 16-foot right-of-way.
Well, now, in this particular case, we would be looking, we're considering, actually, discontinuing that as a town road. And I would imagine that would be the sort of information that, now, we have to be sure and follow our own process, which is probably spelled out right in there.
It's in here.
And I know Margie's been, been working on that. But in terms of, like, right-of-way, I would imagine if we discontinue that as a town road, then that would be up to the property owners of the properties to determine right-of-ways and, I mean, I'm guessing.
Right.
I'm not an attorney, but...
I just came through it because there's a lot of information in there.
Yeah, I think that's really helpful.
Dealing with it, and it mentions on the, for title right-of-way.
Yeah.
Going through the, I believe it's Superior Court.
Mm-hmm.
For the person at the end to get the title for right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if the Select Board's going to come up with...
Well, the town attorney will be very closely involved, Bob.
Right.
Okay.
With all, the whole proceeding.
Okay.
Yeah.
And typically, if somebody needs a right-of-way, the other ones will go to court, as opposed to the town to get it for them.
Right, especially, I mean, in this incident, incidents, if we're, if we are actually giving up the road, then it's given up to the property owners.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I would imagine in the end, they would determine who owns what and...
Yeah, I don't think the town would start incurring costs for the example you...
I don't know, they, they mentioned something in the statutes about doing the surveys and everything. Town doing the surveys.
Well, again, as Margie said, I know we have, we have been in touch with our own attorney, because we, you know, it's not often that we discontinue a road, but when we do, we want to try to do it right.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think all of that kind of information is great in terms of, and I think frankly, it's really good for people, we're on camera, for people to be hearing that. There's a wealth of information out there, and sometimes it's hard to know how to access it, and that's pretty clear right there.
Yeah, because you look up what you're talking about, like, the Board of Civil Authority
Yeah.
Tells the procedures.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, what might actually be helpful is for our website to have a link to that municipal index, so that somebody could, you know, if they, if they don't know how to access this, they could, they could link through our own website.
Because I've talked to people, and I don't know how many of you have been in the military, but they always talk about the shithouse lawyers. They'll tell you this, but then when the time comes, they're nowhere, nowhere around to back you up saying, yeah, that's the law, when it's not the law. By having this, I can fall back, whoever has a copy of it can fall back and say, oh, this is the procedures.
And they would, obviously, that stuff would be updated all the time, based on any legislative changes.
Now, when you go to the procedures, it doesn't give you the full procedure, because you go into that green book that's downstairs with the statues, and that has in the back, or on that statue, how many times it went to the different courts, and the ruling the courts gave on it.
Right. Right.
So that way, you can say, well, we're going to fight this, you go to the book and you look and say, God, there was 20 court cases, and the town lost every time.
Right.
So I don't think we're going to pursue that, we're going to back off from it.
Yeah, sure.
And save on legal fees.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, that's all I got.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Bob, or?
I think that's great information, Bob. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Select Board report for the town report. Every year, the Select Board submits its own report based on the activity that we've been involved in through the year. And you all have the draft, and thank you for some of the input, the edits. I'm hoping that we can have a little discussion about this, if there are areas that we haven't stressed enough, or we've spent too much time on. The auditors, I did talk with Bob Holmes today and said we would try to get this report to him by Wednesday. We also have the budget notes and the budget guide. And the budget notes essentially is a little summary of some of the critical areas in the budget. It indicates changes, why there might be an increase, why there may be a decrease. The budget guide is more of an index describing what various sections, what it means. So I don't know if anyone wants to make any changes at this point. Mitch, I'm not sure if you're just seeing this now.
I saw it earlier.
There are some references in here that clearly will change based on tonight's meeting. What I tried to do was get enough in here so that we might be in the position of just eliminating, as opposed to spending the time to write new material. So, for instance, there is a lot of information regarding the constables, there's information regarding the bylaw changes, and I just put things in there for our own guidance based on whatever it is we decide to do tonight with the warning. It's kind of long, as people know, I tend to be wordy. I guess that comes out in the writing, too.
No, I thought it was quite well done, and the only edits I was able to make were just very small. I did notice just now in the red part that was added since I read it last, that the website should be shaftsbury.org, right?
Okay, I wasn't, yeah, yeah. I had added that, Carl, thank you, had added in the website information, and I, I know that if you put .net, you end up getting...
Yeah, we're redirected to .org.
But we want to put the right one in there.
We were .net, and then we changed to .org, but both still work, I think, is the situation.
Yeah, okay. But this should go in as .org?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's the only right answer.
Karen, have you made a revision?
Yes, Ken.
It's right up on the very top line, the first animal elected two years ago, he was elected last year. Very top line.
Oh, this was just his first year?
This revision here.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought we'd been hearing he hadn't been reelected. Last year was his first year, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Ken.
That's right. I read that and didn't come up.
While we're on law enforcement, I don't know if we want to wait to have that discussion later and then come back to this, or...
Well, I guess that was unless, you can, sure, if you want to say something now, again, I just thought that maybe if we wanted to wait based on what the board decides, but if there was something that wouldn't change based on whatever our...
Well, I mean, I can wait until we get down there, but...
Okay.
Based on our conversation at the, the last meeting I was at, I thought it was, we were not, weren't going to change anything, we're just going to leave it one-year elected.
Well, we're going to, we're going to discuss that tonight. We, we had no motions on that, and so that will, that will be discussed.
Did you meet last week while I was gone?
Yeah.
No. No, we didn't. No, we didn't. No, we didn't.
January 7th.
Yeah, I was here the Thursday, whatever that was.
But did you, did you take a look at the minutes?
We had no, we had no action.
You had the draft of those minutes?
That's why I left the meeting.
Yeah.
Ultimately, when I got downstairs, I was still feeling vaguely confused.
Yeah.
About the desire.
So was I. So was I. So that was the reason I put it in there, depending upon whatever it is that the board, what direction they want to go in this evening, in terms of bringing some sort of clarity to that, to that issue.
I was, I was very happy with the, with the way this was put together. I have no other comments in what I already submitted.
In the other red part, the other part that was added, didn't we decide to spend some money on the generator this year, like 7,000?
No, we deleted it all.
We ended up taking it all out.
Well, we, we left in the 800, which is maintenance.
Oh, okay.
We have a, we have, the memorandum of understanding we have with the school covered the maintenance of the generator.
You know, I, I need that. I don't have a copy of that anywhere.
Really?
Correct. I've never seen one.
Really?
Correct.
Okay.
Because I have the grant file, but I, it's pretty, pretty empty.
Strange. Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll search through my stuff, I'm sure. Yeah, we had that last year. I wonder if Craig had, I don't know. I, but I'm pretty sure, I know I've got a copy somewhere, Margie.
Well, the school should have one, too.
Yeah, I gave, I gave one. I brought one to a meeting and gave it to...
I think it's, I remember...
Harry.
Asking Fran Kinney to try to, he wasn't sure what he was...
Yeah.
Signing, and I remember working something out there, but we just don't have a record.
Yeah.
So I don't know... From whence it came, I think it was generated by the school, actually.
Well, yeah, I mean, Rick Pembroke had sent something, had sent something through. Anyway, we will, it's in the minutes, too. All right. But that, you know, I, it was actually Carl who mentioned, I'd frankly kind of forgotten about the generator as I was putting this together, and Carl was right to say...
And I said that I just claimed I didn't remember the facts enough to write a paragraph.
Yeah.
I didn't remember enough about the website to put a paragraph.
Yeah. 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 So, I mean, does that, does that read the way you would want it to read, Tim?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, we can then put that aside until we figure out what we're going to do with these articles, which we're moving to right now. You all, I'm assuming, have a copy from Margie. We did have the town attorney take a look at some of the language around the zoning, bylaw issue. For the benefit of the folks who are listening, back in 1987, the town voted an article that stated, let me back up a little bit. By statute, a town can be considered a rural town for voting zoning bylaws and amendments, or an urban town, based upon the size of the town. Shaftsbury's, the size of Shaftsbury, population-wise, is such that we could be either-or. And for many years, Shaftsbury was considered an urban town for the purposes of voting zoning bylaws and amendments. And what that means is that the Planning Commission, who, who writes the new language for the town plan, and then bylaws are then developed and voted on, but that's done after numerous public hearings. The Planning Commission then approves or does not approve language changes. It then goes to the Select Board, and the Select Board holds a number of public meetings and then approves, or does not approve, the bylaw changes. Now, that had, it had gone that way for a number of years, many, many years, and then in 1987, and no one can really remember why this happened, it did come before the townspeople on Australian ballot, does the town wish to be considered a rural town for the purposes of voting zoning bylaws? Now, that question passed, and it went along that way. The town was to, in terms of the research the town administrator and town clerk have done, seemed to work according to that directive for many years. And then it looks like somewhere towards the end of the 2000s, 2007, somewhere around there, it, that process kind of dropped by the wayside. And we're not quite sure whether it's because we had changes in town administrators, changes in zoning administrators, we had a change from a zoning board to a development review board. There are a lot of changes taking place in town, and what ended up happening was that the, that bylaw changes and amendments started to be approved by the Planning Commission and the Select Board as they had been, but then it stopped there. Now, in looking at this, obviously, there was some, some concern around it on our part and in town administrator's part, we want to do it according to, you know, the way the town wants it done. So we looked into the legality and where those different changes, where they stood in terms of, you know, the legal system. Well, apparently, there is a two-year statute of limitation if there is, I forget the proper wording...
A procedural defect.
A procedural defect.
In the adoption or amendment of bylaws.
There we go. Thank you. And there was, there clearly was, but essentially, what that meant was that all of the bylaws that had been approved by that process of Planning Commission and then Select Board were, could not be questioned at, at that point, once they passed the two-year statute. We do have two, is it two, changes that were made, actually, three changes that have been made within the last 24 months. And shall I read them?
Yeah, I have to, just to qualify that, the last, the latter, number three, or item C...
Mm-hmm.
Is really, I think, outside the 24-month period.
Oh, actually, that is.
But the Planning Commission Chair considers it a substantive...
So he would like, okay.
A decision.
Okay. Okay.
It's up to the board, you know, whether you want to include it or not.
And he thinks that others prior to that were not substantive?
Well, we did, that was it.
Okay.
That were, right.
Okay. Well, I guess I, you know, first I would ask, well, so anyway, let me, let me back up a bit, just to continue for the, again, the sake of folks who are listening. So what the Select Board is looking at right now are the warnings that will, that you will see on your ballot the day after town meeting. And it, the first one concerns, this has to do with the solid waste management facilities, industrial composting facilities. This would be a new section, 7.13, to the zoning bylaws. Again, it has been, well, I'll read this, "It is for the purpose of regulating and permitting industrial compost facilities in industrial 1 and industrial 2 zones as a conditional use, as presented for public hearings before the Planning Commission and Select Board, and adopted finally by majority vote of the Select Board on August 6, 2012." The second one is revisions to Section 7.15 flood hazard area regulations, as presented for public hearings before the Planning Commission and Select Board, and adopted finally by majority vote of the Select Board on August 6, 2012. Now, the third one Margie's referring to is addition of Section 4.1.1.4.6. Hope you wrote that down. Adaptive reuse of motel properties to enable reuse of existing transient lodging properties along Historic 7A to single or multifamily dwellings, and as presented for public hearing before the Planning Commission and Select Board, and adopted finally by majority vote of the Select Board on November 28, 2011. Now, that's the one that Margie was referring to that actually would have come...
It seems to be outside the statute of limitations for a challenge, but...
Right.
But again, Rob did not delete it from the...
Right.
The warning, so...
So these, if the board decides, these will go on the ballot for the community to, to vote on. And, you know, I think that it will be important for us to have some sort of informational meeting regarding this prior to the vote, because an awful lot of time went into all of these language changes on the part of the, certainly in the part of the Planning Commission. There was a lot of input from the community at the time, and I think it's really important that the public understand the, you know, the issues involved and, and what went into it. And allow them, frankly, the chance to ask questions if they don't fully understand it. I mean, for instance, the flood hazard regulations, that's basically a mandate. I mean, after Hurricane Irene, and we, all towns have been required to add new language, to rework their flood hazard maps. The Planning Commission, I know, worked very closely with the BCRC on the maps, on the language around this. And certainly, the industrial composting, the state is now requiring, you know, a lot of, well, there are new regulations around composting, and there are new goals that they're setting. And it, they will become, not just goals, but they will become mandated in terms of the way and the amount of compost towns can, frankly, can, you know, it needs to go somewhere. We need to have a plan around composting. And I know the Planning Commission, again, researched this very heavily, and I know that there were meetings up in Montpelier to try to understand fully what requirements there were for towns, and, and basically, this does, it identifies particular, a particular area in town where these facilities would be appropriate, and that would be in our industrial 1 and 2 zones. So it's really the first step, I think, in Shaftsbury's move towards being sure that we're complying with the mandates that we know are going to be coming down around composting. So again, these are all really important language additions, I think, to our plan, to the bylaws, and, you know, we're hoping that the town will be involved in, in the process and, you know, vote in an informed way. But I guess my first question to the board would be concerning number three, which is, does fall outside the 24-month period of time. Again, that has to do with the adaptive reuse. And Margie, I'm, you know, I'm, or, and I don't know if Mitch has any more understanding of this at this point, but I know that this was an issue around, we have some, and I think actually, some of the motel property owners had maybe brought this to the attention of the Planning Commission. They have facilities that may not be used, you know, they're not being used. We, they have certainly gone through it a period of time, maybe there wasn't a lot of tourist activity, and I think they were asking, could they be, some of them adapted for a different type of use, you know, multifamily use, that, that kind of thing.
And we discussed that at length and passed it and amended, amended the bylaw.
Yeah. And now, again, this is, we have a fairly new... Yeah, and now, again, this is, we have a fairly new board here, so this is something that this particular board, many would not have, Carl was certainly around, but we have three members that really were not involved in this.
Do we know if we have people that are adaptively reusing motel properties based on this law at the current time?
Not, as far as I know, not right now, but it's something that certainly could happen.
And could have happened during this.
Yes.
Well, there was one motel up in center Shaftesbury, they, they went from motel to like rental units.
Yep.
A few years ago.
Yep.
That was all part of it.
Yep.
And my other question would be though, you've got three items here. Shouldn't they be separated?
They're all, they're written to be approved by yes or no individually.
Oh, okay. Okay, I didn't understand that.
It's going to be on the ballot, though, will be check a box, yes or no, at the end of A, at the end of B, at the end of C.
Oh, okay, all right.
Do we have any reason to think that number three is, C is controversial?
Not at all. It's purely whether, it's purely a date. In my mind, it's just a date issue. I don't want to get into the, into the issue of deciding whether something is really substantive or not. I mean, I, I, and, you know, on second thought, now that Rob has seen this, he's already revised it, and he did not delete C.
But did we send C to him?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's seen the whole thing.
Yeah. I think it's really our decision as to whether we, I mean, we know that, that, that we're outside the statute.
Well, and he originally drafted the, the language.
Right, right.
And has read the dates and, so.
My inclination would be to do what we're legally required here to do, which is A and B, and not C. And so I would make a motion at this time that we put A and B on the ballot.
I'd second that motion.
I think the town clerk.
I, I agree. If we're, if, if we're basically outside of an area of an appeal, why, why stir the pot?
Yep, that's right.
Yes, and, and having these struck down at this point could be problematic, because it sounds like maybe somebody did do something with their motel property based on this law. And so I would be inclined to do, you know, what, what the law requires in this case, and not, not open up the potential that this could be turned down because voters are not fully informed about all the details. Because we, we're really going to have, you know, as you say, some responsibility to re-educate the voters all over again to make sure that A and B get passed, because they're already in effect essentially by defective process. And so we're, our hope, I think we had all hoped that they would be passed by correct process and things would not be disrupted.
Ken, do you have any?
No, I just, you know, like I said, on the C, C motion there, I just wanted to mention that that had been done up there.
Right, okay.
And matter of fact, I tore half of that building down because they weren't going to use the other half.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all those in favor of placing item 1A and B on the, on the ballot?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now, we also.
Mitch, were you voting in there?
Abstained.
You abstained.
I'm sorry, Mitch.
Okay.
Yep. One abstention.
Four, one, zero.
Um.
Four, zero, one.
Yeah, it's four.
Four, zero, one, I always forget.
Yeah, me too.
Zero. Abstention is lost, okay.
Okay, so this brings up the, the second ballot article. And again, it gets back to this question about rural versus urban. And, I mean, this is interesting, the way he has it, well.
Because that's the statute.
This is the way the statute language reads.
Yes, routine, routine bylaw adoption is done by the majority vote of the select board. Rural towns, and then you get into the population definition, are afforded a choice.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's going to be very confusing to anybody that hasn't studied this beforehand.
Yes. Well, it really is, because they, they seem to be, they seem to define first rural towns as under 2,500 population.
Twenty-five to two.
But then there's, okay, then I thought there was something between 25 and.
Twenty-five to five.
To five, yeah. And so we're in that middle place where we can be either or.
I'm just concerned that people will read this and say, what is this? I, I think you'll get people that will just say inny, meany, miney, mo, if they have to, or just not vote on it at all. I do know from personal experience that when such things were on ballots in another state, there was often an explanation in a booklet separate from the, from the ballot, without any further explanation. You, I don't think we're going to, nobody's going to know what this is about.
That's why I was very adamant, I did a lot of research on talking to both Rob and the league about the need for a statement of fact or a background paragraph, whatever, but you're not allowed to have that on the ballot.
Well, and the interesting thing is.
Even though in 87.
In 1987, they actually did. They had, yeah.
In the state of California, and I'm not suggesting we adopt anything from the state of California, but I can tell you, since they typically would have anywhere from five to 15 different such things to be voted upon, there would be a separate booklet, which would explain as objectively as possible what was to be voted on, then a section on pros, written by somebody who wanted it, and a section on cons, written by somebody who didn't want it.
That would be good.
I, I realize that, that for the town of Shaftesbury, that fiscally is not probably an option, but at least one knew what one was voting on when you got something that looked like legalese. And I know legalese.
Yeah, well, and that's why, you know, frankly, going back to our select board report, if we choose to put this language on the ballot, you know, the select board report is someplace where we can give some kind of an explanation. We will have an informational meeting, we'll have our town meeting.
I don't, I'm going to be adequate, frankly. You're not going to have anybody in, at the town meeting in terms of quantity.
Well, we're on camera. I mean, the state apparently tells us, back in 87, they actually did have a, sort of a cheat sheet for the community. You know, they gave an explanation, what, what a rural town is, what an urban town is. Shaftesbury is currently an urban town. We were a rural town until 1980. And I seem to remember the reason this was.
Currently a rural town.
Pardon?
We're currently a rural town.
Yeah, rural.
Right, I'm just reading what they had.
Oh, okay, oh, yes, yes, yes.
They were, we were a rural town until 1980. We were, we were an urban town in 87. So we've.
Is there any advantage for being an urban town or rural town grant-wise or anything like that?
You know, this, the way this was originally done in 87, it says, shall Shaftesbury be a rural town for the purpose of voting zoning and subdivision bylaws? I did have the emergency management director come up to me and say, he was a little bit concerned because he had heard the discussion on camera, and he said, you know, I just want to be sure that this doesn't, switching from, you know, rural to urban, urban to rural, does that in, in any way affect our, our rating, our insurance ratings for fire suppression? I don't imagine that it has any impact whatsoever. And frankly, this, again, this is for the purposes of bylaw changes.
Right, but I would, I mean, I was just wondering, like I said, for grant, purposes of grants or anything like that, if it made any difference.
No.
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 For planning grants, no.
Well, any kind of grant.
No.
If we were to have some type of a cheat sheet.
That, if, if we have, sorry, Carl, if census figures, the actual population figures would drive and could drive allocations of grant funds, perhaps.
Right.
But that's, has nothing to do with whether we define ourselves.
Well, no, I mean, everything is like, you know, if we could get a source system in town and get a grant for it, you know.
It's not going to.
I think, well.
How we adopt our bylaws would not.
Yeah.
Affect that.
Right.
You know, I.
If we stick to them.
I think one of the, one of the concerns with remaining, with the designation and, and following through with town votes on every zoning bylaw, the concern that I have is that, you know, there have been a number of changes over the years, and as you have, you know, differing populations come in and different types of use, you, those instances of bylaw changes may come up more and more. When you have the planning commission spend as much time as they do researching a situation, a question, an issue, bringing in the community, bringing in experts to talk with them about potential language changes and what that might, how that might impact the town, going through that process, sending it forward to the select board, having the select board go through that process of vetting the whole thing out, and then, having to then put it before the townspeople, who, quite honestly, you know, may not have spent the time sitting, thank you, Bob, for being here, but, you know, as you can see, all the other chairs are empty, and depending upon who's watching us on cat TV, the, the community may not be as informed or aware. And I think, you know, as evidenced by some of the things we said, who, who's going to read that if they haven't had some understanding of what's going on behind some of these issues and be able to answer appropriately?
I, I think the point that Ken makes is, is a good one, especially, especially because we were planning to have the cost of a new garage increase our taxes, and we're not going to get the garage, but the increase in taxes is going to go up nonetheless because we're going to be saving for a garage, so the result is that taxes are going up. People are going to be sensitized to that, so when they look at this thing, as Ken just asked, I presume the majority of them are going to say, how is this going to impact my costs? And nobody's really going to know. Again, for purposes of, as you call, a cheat sheet, if there was something that explained, this is objectively what it means, this is why it's beneficial, says somebody, and this is why it's not beneficial, says somebody else, and the fiscal impact to town residents is, it will have an impact, it will not have an impact, or it is unknown if it'll have an impact.
Well, certainly, we can put something in the banner.
Or have an information sheet for a public information meeting.
I would have an, why couldn't we have?
Well, that, of course, we have to.
Why couldn't we have an information sheet at, at the election site? Just if people want.
Can't do that.
Why?
I'm pretty sure you cannot have any.
You don't have to hand it to people, it can be available.
I don't, that's up to the town clerk who, who runs the elections.
I'm only saying, I've seen it in plenty of other places, but maybe it's not.
But she's director of elections.
Yeah, yeah.
We can do as much educating as we want to up until the day of the Australian ballot vote.
Right.
We can include informational discussions even on the floor of town meeting, but that's the latest that we can by statute.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm very tainted by our ability to educate the town based on recent past history.
Carl, we can, we can educate, we can do exactly what you were saying to do.
We can. I'm only saying, will that be as diffuse as it needs to be for people that are going to be voting on this?
Well, you know, whether it is or it isn't, I mean, honestly, we had mailouts on the garage, and then people still didn't understand or read, or, we can only do the best we can. And by law, you know, we have to put certain things on the ballot, and if the, you know, if some folks understand it and vote, if others don't, that is the way it is. I, I hear your pain and, you know, it's, it's frustrating.
It's not pain, it's, it's an observation. It's really an observation and, and a way to allow people not to come out of the voting booth and saying, damn, how did they put that on there and not tell me what it's about?
Well, should we?
And then we can tell them, well, you sure looked at the paper. Well, I didn't see it in the paper.
Do you want to delay? Because you don't have to do it this year.
No, 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 I don't want to.
This does not have to go on the morning.
I don't want to delay, I want to find some way that is easily available. My thought would be, and maybe I can just talk to Judy about it, if we could have an explanation sheet, not handed to voters, but available to voters if they wanted.
Let me, let me just take a, a step backward. The bigger picture in my mind is for institutional memory and how to assure that, once we adopt a practice, that the town adheres to the practice. And I still have questions as to why would something like this, which is a very important procedure, get lost? I mean, if we were doing this as late as the, I mean, we, we've had bylaw and town plan adoptions through the 2000, you know, the, the last decade. And why, when, you know, why was there this break in practice? Why are redefining, why are we redefining ourselves, first, so that we can adopt by majority vote, then we go back to adopting only by the voters, and then we swing back the other way? It, it seems to be that the only cure to do this once and for all, if you want to, to give the select board the clear mandate to do a majority vote after the requisite public hearings, is to have it on the ballot. When you actually present the question to the voters, does not have to be now, if we need more education, it could be done in November, but historically, a lot of discussion-related issues are in, considered in March. So you, you can decide not to have this. It was only a suggestion of the town attorney that we consider whether or not to place that question on the warning. So he was asked to look at suggested language, and he crossed out a lot of the language that I had that provided background.
Did he explain why?
No, he, no.
Or was it wordsmithing, or is it legal issue?
I'm too wordy. No, I'm saying I'm too wordy.
I believe he did send you an email that said, you can't explain it.
He did, I thought so too.
Now that you mention it, I think I did see that email too.
Yep. So that's why we had to cross out, should we adopt it by future amendments to be adopted by majority vote? We can't say versus current practice of adopting the same by majority vote. I don't know why that's leading.
Okay, just one, Bob, I'm sorry, you've had your hand up for a long time.
It wasn't in today's paper, it's today's agenda of the meeting. It was not mentioned up today.
I know.
It rarely is.
And we, we don't have any control over whether they put it in. I mean, you can see on our.
Well, I called and asked, and they told me they never got it.
That's because we finalize, yeah, I told Bob, it's because we finalized it on Thursday, which is too late for the Monday.
I mean, it seems silly that you have to have an agenda, you know, to them a week before for them to put it in. You know, we, honestly, Bob, with the number of meetings that we have, we can't, it's hard for us to meet on a Monday and then have to have an agenda for the next week with all of the research and input from other board members within a day, to know exact, because frankly, once you put that agenda together, then you're bound by that agenda. You can't add anything to it, so.
Unless some emergency pops up.
Well, and then if, if it's a real emergency, yes, you can have an emergency meeting, but I, I am sorry for that. We do put it on the website, but, and we do get it into them, you know, we try the Wednesday or Thursday prior to our Monday meeting, which we would hope would give them plenty of time to get it into Monday's paper, but.
Now, on these articles that the town wrote in March, what they did in 2001 and 2002, because I did some research on how the 1600-foot to the 1400-foot elevation for forest and recreation had a, came about, what they did on the March ballot was, you go back to, what, January 14th, select board meeting. So that, when it comes time to vote on that article, because there'll be a copy of the articles to be voted on at, like, the post office? Isn't there a copy up there?
Oh, yeah.
You can have to look at?
Yeah.
So that gives them time to come in and see Judy, to go and look at the select board meeting notes, saying, oh, this is what they want to do on this.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So when it comes time to have the vote in March, they can vote yes or no on that, that article.
Right, right. It is, it's a matter, I mean, it's. It is, it's a matter, I mean, certainly, we can get information on the website too. It's a matter of people do need to take that next step and try to access the information to inform themselves. And, I mean, I.
That's how they did it back in 2001, 2002.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, again, I think this whole discussion and placing these things on the ballot is an attempt to, frankly, clean up the situation. Once it was brought to, certainly Margie became aware of it. And I think, you know, we could just wait until November and then frankly, we probably, I mean, they, I do know that the planning commission, right now, has a number of bylaw changes. There's a number of language changes that they're working on right now. And, you know, I, I do think that it makes sense to clarify this.
I think, it sounds like we have consensus on the board that the, what we think the right way to do zoning bylaw changes in a town as big and complex as Shaftesbury is by majority vote of the select board and not by Australian ballot.
Well, that's, that has also been the reading that we've gotten from the town attorney, that he has said, most towns that are typical, a typical size and structure like Shaftesbury, do it by majority vote after hearings.
That's the way we, we want to do it, that's the way the town attorney does it. I think we should put it on the ballot and ask permission to do it that way. Worst case scenario is we have to put every zoning bylaw on the ballot. And if we don't attempt to get that changed, we'll have to put every zoning bylaw on the ballot.
Right, that's right.
I guess, I'm, I'm just, I'm in agreement with exactly what you said. And I don't quite understand Rob, Rob's, Rob, Ron, Rob?
Rob.
Rob's need to put it the way he put it.
You're welcome to talk with attorney.
I, I just plain don't understand why they're magical words.
Do you wanna talk with Bob tomorrow, with Rob tomorrow?
Glad to talk to, to Rob.
And it's, it's very time sensitive.
Yeah, we, we have to, we have to have this.
If we can do it tomorrow.
If we can reach him.
I mean, my only concern is that then, we will, we will need a, we will need another special meeting of the board then to.
I'm just saying, it's pretty rare, speaking as an attorney, that you have to have magic words. And I don't understand why, in this case, we need magic words that we know the town will not understand.
It's, no, it's not that, it's, as you say, it's the lack of background.
That's what it is, because these words are just what we want.
No, it is, no, I'm sorry, it is magic words because you had an explanation, you crossed it out.
Oh, well, it's true.
I think we should have it on the ballot. And I like the wording with a little more explanation on it too. For clarification, I recuse my, the agenda does not match the one, two, and three parts of the, I recuse myself from one instead of A. And then we're talking about two now, so shall the voters approve, authorize future amendments to zoning bylaws. I wouldn't even take "future" out of there.
Right, I would take, I would take.
I would take "future" right out of there.
Yes, I think so too.
And the understanding is that the planning commission does do a lot of work on these bylaws. And there are many, three public hearings in the planning commission. Then it comes to the select board, there are three more public hearings. At what point, you know, and which, everyone gets to speak. Any for and against, and, and, you know, these aren't punitive amendments or bylaws of any, their, their, their purpose is to try to enhance the town of Shaftesbury. So, I, I mean, I, I would like to keep a little explanation in there myself and I guess we'll have to see what Carl can come up with, Rob.
Do you know what time he gets in? Nine, nine thirty?
I would say that, eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
I can email him tonight to let him know that you're gonna be calling.
Okay, would you, send me a copy of the email and his telephone number?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here, I found the email that says, the Secretary of State's office, Bill Sinning, confirmed that only yes/no questions can appear on the ballot. No explanatory language or background, background information statements can appear.
Right.
That's from the Secretary of State, according to this email.
Yep.
I remember reading that now that you mentioned it again.
Now, can, I mean, it says, as provided by VSA 24, blah, 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 blah. Can that be included in there? Is there any reason that that language would be helpful?
Only if somebody's gonna come in with a computer and, and look it up online when they're doing it.
No, I'm saying if we included that section language. In other words, you know, I mean, it sounds.
Well, let's take a, let's take a look at it. We can take a look at that section.
Yeah, my only concern would be it'd be too long to put on the ballot.
That's what I'm wondering.
You know, I, I guess, again, you know, explanatory language to one person is, is exactitude to another. So that's, that's my, and, and let's, let's remember one other thing. We certainly wanna comply with the law, but nobody knows what the law says until a judge says that that's what the law says. So, and I question, who, under God's heaven, would be actually challenging a vote if we allowed something that we thought was not explanation but necessary documentation?
So, the way they did it in eighty-seven, the explanatory information was not under the actual article. It was at the bottom. And Rob is suggesting we can't do that? Because again, this is not, this is not within
Yeah.
the language of the actual article.
I sent that over to them the first time.
Oh, he saw this?
Oh, yeah, he probably didn't remember, but we can, again, send that.
Margie, you got, you sent this to the Secretary of State and he wrote backs with this statement?
No, we talked, we talked. Because I, I much prefer being able to give the background, you know, really talk about it with somebody. I did not show this, because this, you know, you have changers in the Secretary of State.
Right.
You know, it used to be Paul Giuliani, and maybe in Paul's days, this was, this was okay.
Yeah.
I, you know, I just want this to be as, we gotta minimize the amount of time we put it in, get the questions, we agree on the questions we want.
Right, that's what I'm wondering, if we can, if we can agree on the question itself and then try to determine whether or not we can have any explanatory information on the ballot, on a section of the ballot.
I will, I can send that over again tonight so that he sees it before he talks with Carl.
But that way, frankly, if we were able to, for instance, have a motion and a vote on num, item number two, as it's worded, I agree with Mitch that I would take the "future" out of there. But that is essentially what we're looking for.
As it's worded before the, the Rob Worthington edits?
No, I'm looking at Rob's. The very yes/no, shall the voters of the town of Shaftesbury authorize amendments to the zoning bylaws to be adopted by majority vote of the select board as provided by twenty-four VSA, blah, blah, blah? Yes or no? And hoping that, again, we can get some kind of note at the bottom of the ballot that's very just factual.
See, I think our strategy should be just the opposite, that we should write it as it's, as Margie had written it here, with maybe some minor edits and claim that that's how we write a yes/no question. Because it's pretty clear from what she wrote that the, the Secretary of State said, you may not have explanatory notes. So I suspect we'll fail on that if we have something separate from the ballot question. But if we write the ballot question as Margie wrote it, I think that's, we can say that that's how we write a yes/no question. And I noticed in the email that this came in, Rob said, here are my suggested edits. He didn't say anything that, you know, I'm keeping you from doing something illegal on the ballot. It was suggested edits. I think at the very least, the way it's written, that Margie had written it before, it's.
Can you read that, Tim? Would you read that, please?
Shall the voters of the town of Shaftesbury authorize, I'm taking out the word "future", authorize amendments to the zoning bylaws and amendments thereto to be adopted by majority vote of the select board in keeping with the routine adoption practice outlined as provided in twenty-four VSA, and I added in an email, for urban towns, versus the current and optional practice of adopting the same by majority vote to the voters in a duly-warranted regular or special meeting in keeping with the provisions of VSA, of twenty-four VSA for rural towns.
And do you really think that people are gonna understand that?
They still won't even.
More than just this very simple, do it by majority vote?
I think the rural and urban town will confuse them.
I think it might bring up more questions, frankly.
Yeah, Rob was saying, the simpler the better.
Yeah.
Is the format for a ballot.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, why couldn't we just simply do that? Shall the voters in the town of Shaftesbury authorize zoning bylaws and amendments thereto to be adopted by majority vote of the select board? Or by special meeting? Period, basta, for, a special meeting for, for rural towns?
No, because it's not a yes or no.
No, that's not a yes, no answer.
It's one or the other.
It's one or the other, yeah.
One or the other.
Fine, then, or, special meeting.
No.
No.
Well, no, well, excuse me, excuse me, we have, I'm reading it. For shall, in keeping versus, is trying to, may be adopted by majority vote of the select board in keeping with so-and-so, one versus the.
No, you can't, I don't think you have, can have versus. It's, it's.
He, this is his, what he wrote. Oh, I don't have what he wrote?
No, I'm looking. Shall, shall the voters of the town of Shaftesbury authorize amendments?
What did he write? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the old one.
Well, he, we crossed out all of this. And so that's distilled to this.
Shall authorize future amendments to the zoning to be adopted by majority of the select board?
What do you think, Kenny?
I think the simpler the better, I think that's pretty good right there.
As provided by twenty-four VSA, section forty-four two.
Well, then, that is pretty simple, that is pretty simple.
Right, correct.
I think we need it, I think.
I like that, actually, I thought we were talking about this one, I'm sorry. I was going on, that's what I have my, had my email.
Let's do this again, let's do this again, okay?
I haven't yet to find my way into the Dropbox. Sorry.
Well, there was a more, a later email.
So we're looking at the language, shall the voters of the town of Shaftesbury authorize amendments to the zoning bylaws to be adopted by majority vote of the select board as provided by twenty-four VSA, section four-four-four-two, C, one.
Correct.
Yes, no? And we will have to educate, we'll have to explain to them what this is all about.
Now, see, I think the word "future" is important because just above, you're gonna be, you're being asked to actually approve them. So people are gonna go, huh? So then they get down to question two.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And so, so from this point forward, we are going to do it a different way.
Mm-hmm.
That's why you need the "future".
Okay, yep, I get it.
I agree.
That works.
Okay, so moved.
All right, so we have a motion.
Second.
Tim, second. By Ken, any other comments, questions?
I don't know, what is the motion, what is the language of the motion?
The language of the motion is, shall, the language of the motion would be that the board, that the following language will appear on the ballot for town meeting, for town warning on the ballot. Shall the voters of the town of Shaftesbury authorize future amendments to the zoning bylaws to be adopted by majority vote of the select board as provided by twenty-four VSA, section four-four-four-two, parentheses, C, parentheses, one? Question mark. That would be the motion.
I just have a comment that if for some reason.
Kim made the motion, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Carl seconded it.
I seconded it. No, I don't know who seconded it.
Ken seconded it.
Mm-hmm.
And you have a comment, Mitch?
I just think that it's very important that people understand the amount of time and effort that goes into these bylaws. It's not meant, they're not meant to be punitive, they're meant to enhance the, every pe, per pe, every person in the town of Shaftesbury. And if, I mean, if, if this were to go the other way, I mean, if, if they wanna stay their way, they want it on Australian ballot, I think it's going to raise the question on the planning commission of their use. What are we, what are we here for? We spend all this time doing this when a person can get a hundred and twenty signatures and put something on the ballot and have it passed? Or not? And I, I.
Yeah, yeah. You know, one thing that I.
Well, that's what we're trying to fix.
That's what we're trying to fix.
Because that's the situation now.
Right. Now, the reality is that, as I understand it, even though these bylaws, if the town approves this and the bylaw, it goes through the planning commission process, comes to the select board, goes through that process, you need a majority vote of the select board. At that point even, if the community had a concern, they could come forward with a petition and, you know, basically challenge that language. So it, this is not to say that, you know, if we go back to the system that we had, that the community still can't come in and say, you know what, we don't like what you just did and we wanna change it. That, they still have the ability to do that, so. But I certainly, I, I really would echo Mitch what you just said, which is, seeing how hard the planning commission works on this stuff. And then again, you know, I've been on the select board for years and, and we've had many meetings that come out of, you know, the planning commission's consideration of these. And I, I think it's, these are not quick decisions that are made around this language change. Bob?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. You read an email from the select, uh, select board, from the Secretary of State. When Jim Condos, he was down in Bennington, he told that, hey, they don't enforce it, they only advise. That's all they do.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, the, the email I read sounded like it was telling us what was legal.
Yeah.
That's how I interpreted.
They consider legal, but they have no teeth. They can't enforce it, they only advise.
But, you know, we really, I mean, when it, when it comes to your attention that this, that the town had voted one way years ago and, you know, that we, for some reason, there was a break in the system and we haven't been following what were apparently the wishes for some reason back then. And I, I seem to remember, just my institutional memory going way back, was that there was an issue that faced the town at the time. And I don't know if it was the development of Glastonbury when there was that Properties of America and the whole Forest and Rec Zone. I'm not quite sure, but something was in the works at that time. And I think that might have been one of the reasons that this came before the town.
Again, the only concern that, that I would see Again, the only concern that I would see is not that the state is going to come in and do anything, you're absolutely right, but the question that comes up is if, if we pass this, uh, and, and the board is doing something that didn't comply procedurally with what we had to do, and somebody that had a development that wanted to do something, wanted to undermine it and challenge it, to say that we didn't follow the proper process, that would be the basis for us to, if you will, get all tripped up. It's only if some independent third party chooses to challenge the approach that has been taken by the board because of their own reasons. It's not the state. Nobody's afraid of the state coming in and taking us to court. It's whether or not a third party who's unhappy with whatever decision the board is, comes back and says, wait a second, the board never actually followed the appropriate procedure to get the authority to turn down my project. That's how it happens.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I would make one other comment that I agree with what Carl was saying earlier, that we need a voter's guide on this, and I'd be willing to take lead on creating a voter's guide if I can get, uh, help from...
I can help you.
People who know more about zoning bylaws and such than I do.
But what do we do with the voter's guide?
And then we worry, we do, we get it out any way we can and get it as close to the polls as we're allowed, which may be, you know, I suspect something like 150 feet from the front door or something like that, but, uh, that we, we create the material, we try to get it out, and hope for the best.
Certainly can be down on the table, down in, you know, Cole Hall here. I mean, that's an informational...
Again, I'm, I'm, I think we need to find out whether or not, I can ask Rob if I can give him a call tomorrow.
Yes.
I don't understand, since we're not, the paper would not advocate anything. It wouldn't advocate voting for or against anything, it would merely be an exploratory, explanatory document, and if it's merely explanatory and does not advocate for or against something, I don't understand why it couldn't be available.
Well, I suspect what he would say is that whether or not it advocates is arguable, and that you can't bring advocating materials into the polls.
Well, you know, why can't we, I mean, would it invalid, the question that I would have is, you know, I mean, I know Bob is suggesting that they're not going to enforce anything, but, you know, why couldn't we do something similar to this? We are not putting the language within the ballot itself, the ballot article itself, but, I don't know if you've all seen that, I'll hand it around, but that's, just put a little notation down there. Put a note on it. Now, that's very different from a whole flyer that gives the pros and the cons and...
The problem is, Karen, you're going to need to do that if we decide...
Oh, it's got to be on the ballot, right?
Well, we have other questions that are coming up further down the ballot, if you decide to keep them on, that are going to benefit equally from...
Informational stuff.
Informational statements.
Well, again, that's our job. We have to, we have to inform, we have to do the best we can, folks, at our informational meeting, at town meeting, that's what we have to do. I'm hoping that we'll have a Planning Commission, maybe the Chair of the Planning Commission, at our town meeting, because this, we do need to speak to this issue, to inform the public the best we can.
You also sent me...
I'm going to ask for a vote on this, that we have, we have a motion, and we have a second on this language. Are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor?
Can you repeat the, the motion? I really don't know what I'm voting on.
Shall the voters of the town of Shaftesbury authorize future amendments to the zoning bylaws to be adopted by majority vote of the Select Board as provided by 24 VSA Section 4442(c)(1)?
And, and, the complete text of the motion is that we are voting to put that language on the ballot.
That's right. That's right. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ken?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a unanimous vote. All right. Okay, well, and, Tim, thank you for offering to help with that informational thing, because I think it would be vital to have it there for town meeting, for our informational meeting. And, you know, we have two meetings scheduled in the month of February, and then we have town meeting. So, we should, you know, again, discuss this, I guess, at every one of our meetings.
And Carl, do you still intend to talk to the Attorney?
Yeah, I'll be speaking, and what I will speak to him about is whether or not we can provide a flyer at the polling place by the town.
And ask him if, ask him if that's legal while you're at it, what's on there?
Well, I really, I really don't care, this is historical, why would, why would we want to do that?
Well, because we want to do it again, if it's legal.
Frankly, I would, I would, I'm thinking that we would provide a flyer that explains every one of these things to one extent or another, and again, the very important point that I think is, is vital to this town, based on recent history, is to advise them whether or not it has a financial impact on the town. They don't know. If they don't understand, they're going to want to know, as you pointed out, I think, you know, what's the finances here? And you suggest that maybe it may not be legal for us to do it at the polling place. I can tell you as a fact, the largest state in the Union does it that way, and sends it out, as long as it's from the government, it's not from a, from an advocacy group, it's from the town, it's from the government. Here is objectively what this is, what this means, why it's good, why it's bad, and what the financial impacts are.
No, I think it's, I think it sounds like a great way.
Yeah.
I really do.
And that's all I intend to ask him about.
I'm just wondering how, and I, we got to leave the issue on, on A and B, but how would you determine the fiscal impact of zoning?
Maybe we couldn't. The answer would be, we don't know what the fiscal impact is.
Okay.
It's that simple.
All right.
Well, I think we can't leave it that way. We can't say we don't know what it is. Either there is a fiscal impact, or there is...
Other states...
I don't anticipate this having any fiscal impact, frankly.
Treasurers of other states may say, on, on such, such documents, fiscal impact is not known at this time.
Well, but, you know, again, Carl, when you bring up an issue like a fiscal impact of whether the Select Board votes bylaws by majority, or the town votes it by majority, to suggest that there's a fiscal impact to that, you suggest there's a fiscal impact even by discussing or saying fiscal impact is unknown.
Fiscal impact, colon, none.
Well, that's better than unknown, frankly.
Well, I thought you were talking about something else. I'm sorry, I thought you were going to...
No, I thought we were talking about the bylaws.
My suggestion is that what we put together is not just for that one item that we just voted on, but for each one of these things that we're asking them to vote on.
Right, but I think each information, you know, it has to be specific to that particular situation.
Of course, of course.
And I'm sug, right now, I'm on the zoning. I have moved forward to constables, but, you know...
On the zoning, for the, for the fiscal impact, I would assume the answer would be fiscal impact, colon, none.
Okay, okay. That's, thank you. I was concerned about suggesting, we, there might be, but we don't know what it is when I...
I'm not suggesting it, because if you assume there's none, there's none.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll move forward now to the discussion of the constables. And we have, you know, this again, has been an ongoing issue that really came up back in 2009, I think, when the state began to talk about changing the state statute, the requirements for constables. If any constable is, is performing law enforcement duties within a municipality, they must be fully certified. Now, that regulation went into place last year, I think it was just last year that it went into place. Shaftesbury's constables have never been involved in law enforcement, actual law enforcement, which is, um, you know, going after speeders, carrying guns, arresting. We've had constables in the past who have helped to enforce the dog licenses, burn barrel ordinances, those kinds of things. The constables had approached us, we have a first and second constable in this town of Shaftesbury, they are both elected for one-year positions. A town is, by state statute, required to have a constable, but not a second constable. Shaftesbury does have two. Last year was the first year that the townspeople voted in, um, for first constable, an individual who is a fully-certified law enforcement officer. Now, it was not, we were not aware, and I think because we never had that situation before us, that when a constable has, is, is elected, and has, is a fully-certified law enforcement officer, they have the ability at their own discretion to perform law enforcement activities within the municipality that elected them, full law enforcement powers. Shaftesbury, for the, we, we only had a budget of $100, and then we increased it to $200 back in 2009, I think, for our constables. Traditionally, it was never used, it was primarily a volunteer position, but again, times have changed. We were looking at a situation where we thought with a fully-certified law enforcement constable, that that may have, we could have utilized that person to supplement our sheriff's services. We've been contracting with the sheriff since 2009, um, for 20 hours a week. Well, it appears from what we have heard from the sheriff's department, that in their opinion, there would be too much, there could be too much overlap, which would lead to confusion, if we had a fully-certified law enforcement constable working within the town, along with having a contract with the sheriff's department. So, there was, frankly, there was some confusion around that, we weren't quite sure where to go with it, but we knew that we were being serviced by the sheriff's department, we had, at that point, had no problems with those services. And the question came up, well, um, how do we proceed? In the past, the board, and, and a board even previous to this one, has discussed the idea of extending the term of constable. One of our hesitations over the years has been to put forth a budget for certification, because it's costly to certify, um, a constable, get them fully certified with law enforcement. So, we said, well, that didn't really seem to be a good, um, way to spend taxpayer dollars if we, if we have someone trained, and then that person potentially could leave a year later. So, the board hesitated, we didn't provide really much of a budget at all for constables. And we're at the point now of trying to determine, um, a few questions. One is whether the town should consider extending the term for constable, if the constable is elected, from a one-year to a two-year term. The board had even talked about, should we ask the townspeople to allow the constable to be appointed, not elected, but have it be in an appointed position, so that there would be more authority over the activities of the constable. We do, again, now have a situation where the constable is fully certified, and because he's fully certified, he can perform law enforcement in the town. He's only constrained right now by the budget, the fact that he doesn't have a budget. But if he chose to do it on his own, he has the right, the legal right, to be a law enforcement officer in Shaftesbury right now. So, again, the board has discussed this with the understanding that, um, we now know that. We didn't. We were not aware of the statute language that gives him the ability to, at his discretion, perform law enforcement. And the question is, do we put that question to the community? Essentially, what the, if the community was concerned in any way, or did not want the constable to have full law enforcement capabilities or authority, then the town has to actually vote to prohibit that. Otherwise, he's got it. He's already got it. Now, we can do a number of things. We can do nothing, we can just keep it the way it is, um, and have no budget for the constables, let them be elected as they have been yearly. We can ask the community to extend the elected term. We can ask the community if they would choose to prohibit law enforcement for their constables. So, those are, those were the three, I believe, that we put on here in draft form, and I'll read them. Shall the voters of the town of Shaftesbury prohibit its first and second constables from exercising law enforcement authority as provided by 24 VSA Section 1936a1? Number two, shall the voters of the town of Shaftesbury agree to fill the offices of first and second constable by appointment of the Select Board rather than by election as provided by 17 VSA Section 2651a? And the third would be, potentially, in the event that ballot article number four, which is the one I just read, is not approved, shall the voters of the town of Shaftesbury change the terms of its first and second constable from one-year terms to two-year terms as provided by 17 VSA Section 26467? So, again, we have discussed this numerous times, and we really are at the point, I need motions. We need to make a decision as to what, if anything, we will put on the ballot. Tim?
I would make a motion to put number three on the ballot. Shall the voters of the town of Shaftesbury prohibit the first and second constable from exercising law enforcement authority?
Okay. Do we have a second for discussion?
I'll second.
My, uh, my reason for doing that is, I think that's the only thing among these to me that has, um, that, that I feel at all motivated to address. And mainly what we're addressing there is a change in the law that happened, as you said, last year, that allows the first and second constable to exercise law enforcement I think, uh, second...
Tim, just, just a correction, just, just a quick correction on that. The law itself did not, the law has always been, as I understood it, from our constable and all the research that we've done, constables who have law, who are fully-certified law enforcement officers have always had the ability to perform, am I right, Mitch?
Mm.
To perform law enforce, we, Shaftesbury has never had a constable, this has never come up from us, for us, because we've never had a constable who is a fully-certified law enforcement officer. That's, that's the difference for us. Am I, Margie, you're shaking your head, am I getting it wrong?
No, I don't, I, I, I think that the changes all came about, oh, I don't know, late 90s, 2000, but Mitch did a lot of research, um, when there was a lot more discussion about community policing and ways to enhance community policing, but I could be wrong.
I, my, my recollection was that they always had the law enforcement authority, however, recent legislation required that anyone who was a constable exercising law enforcement authority had to have certain prerequisites.
There you go.
Yeah.
So, they, they always had law enforcement authority, but the legislature limited the ability to utilize that until they had met prerequisites.
Certification.
There you go.
Certification.
That's how it was.
If you will, it was a procedural, not a substantive change.
So, so in a way, yeah, so Tim is still...
So, well, that's not, that wasn't my understanding, so...
No, that's...
So, that's, they've always had law enforcement authority for all time until two, a year ago, and then they said...
And they still did.
They have to be certified to have law enforcement authority.
And I, I think it's part-time certified for certain functions, there are, there's different...
I remember we looked at this...
Yeah, and then you can only, but you have to be supervised in order to do part-time certification.
Well, yeah, but I always thought that any certified police officer, if he sees a crime on duty or off duty, is obliged to arrest somebody or do, do his job. Is that, is that right?
Well, you got to be a police officer with authority from somebody, so...
Well, no, because he's a police officer, Carl, I thought, it was my understanding that, that they saw a crime.
I, I, I don't think that's true, because if you are certified to be an officer, you still have to be on a law enforcement or in an organization. For instance, if I took all the courses to be a law enforcement officer, but I never tried to join Bennington, I couldn't, I wouldn't have any more authority than you if I went to arrest somebody. I'd have authority, just like you, I could arrest like a citizen.
What about what about a citizen's arrest?
Uh, yeah, that's right, but it wouldn't be the same thing. It wouldn't be the same thing, because obviously, you don't need to be certified to be a law enforcement officer if the only authority you have is the same thing as you or me.
In this case, in this case, Paul's a sheriff, or a deputy, constable, I think, but he's also an officer for Manchester Police Department.
He's, his authority as a deputy is up in Manchester, not in Shaftesbury. Just like, he was saying that if he had, if he was a constable in Shaftesbury with law enforcement authority... with law enforcement authority, he couldn't go down the powernol and arrest somebody, because he was outside of his area of authority.
Only within the municipality that votes him in.
So, you have to be on a law enforcement, government, governmental entity.
So, he can serve in another municipality.
If, if he's appointed from that other municipality, the Constable can serve, can serve in another municipality, but not as an elect, he can't be elected in both places.
Oh.
Well, what I had argued the last time was that I didn't feel like there was any need for any ballot articles about the Constable, and-
Excuse me, C, let's see, not D.
Given what apparently was my misunderstanding about what had changed a year ago was what prompted me to make this motion. It sounds to me like we're back in a situation where the, the office of the Constable, there's, it's almost like, why are we talking about it? Nothing has changed.
Well, it's really the municipality that decides whether or not the Constable will perform law enforcement duties in the town. They've never done it in Shaftesbury. It hasn't happened.
I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's correct. I don't, I don't think that's correct.
Well, they've never, they've never made arrests, they've never-
Let me explain why. They have the authority right now. They have the authority, a law enforcement authority, today, this evening, yesterday, tomorrow morning. Why? Because they have the prerequisites per statute to be a law enforcement person, and they are a Constable of this town. So, therefore, the only control that we have over the Constables who fit that statute is whether or not we fund them to allow them to go out and perform these duties. If, in fact, they decided to perform those duties without funding, hypothetically, they still would be able to do it. And I think that's the reason why we were talking about reducing their authority from being able to exercise law enforcement authority. That was my understanding of why it was there, because we don't have to give them anymore. They've got everything they need except money. And that, nothing has changed, because there's no money that's funded them.
And they have always had that authority.
They've always had that, they, who are certified per the recent statute changes, have had that authority.
Before the, that statute changed-
They couldn't.
Our, I thought Margie just said, before that statute changed, they could. Our Constables could exercise law enforcement authority.
Well, none of our Constables could. None of ours could, okay? That is the reason-
By, by accident-
But that's the reason that our Constables came to the Select Board and said, "We want to be certified." This was back in 2009.
Because they didn't have certification.
That's right.
But the ones that we have today, at least one of them does have certification.
That's right. And the, and the Select Board at the time was wrestling, frankly, with the question of, and again, I think we need, yes, we happen to have a Constable right now who has law enforcement. But the dilemma that we had was, number one, we didn't have anyone that had, was a fully certified law enforcement officer. And the question was, do we pay this money for somebody to get certified? And it's a one-year position. They could leave after a year. And then, again, what came up, once we had a certified law enforcement officer as a Constable, was, wait a minute, we're now hearing that this person could, you know, go chase the bad guys, so to speak. I mean, he could go after a speeding car without checking in with anyone. He can arrest somebody.
Just, just to make sure I understand the history, in before, in 2001, the Constable of Shaftesbury had law enforcement authority?
The statute says so.
By statute.
Apparently, totally new to me, this-
That that would have been true, but apparently, would have been statewide.
Sure, yeah.
Constables had law enforcement authority.
This is, I'm reading from 2005, okay? What authority do Constables have? All Constables, whether full or part-time, first or second, appointed or elected, have powers specifically enumerated in VSA 24. These include the power to serve civil or criminal process, destroy animals, kill injured deer, assist the health officer in discharge of his or her duties, serve as a district court officer, remove disorderly people from town meeting, and collect taxes when no tax collector is elected. Any additional authority Constables have is determined by the municipality they serve. For instance, municipalities through their Select Boards may direct their Constables to enforce civil ordinances. They may direct them to enforce criminal ordinances if their Constables, if their Constables have law enforcement authority. See below for law enforcement authority prerequisites, and that's where it gets into all of the certification. So, essentially, what that is-
And that's 2005.
That's 2005.
What changed last year? That's what I don't understand.
There wasn't, I think, I think that's a misunderstanding.
I think we woke up last year.
What we woke up to-
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. The discussions began about a year ago.
So, what happened last year is we elected a Constable who was certified. That's all that's changed?
Correct.
In recent, in recent times?
Yes, although, again, for Constables to perform law enforcement duties, they have to be certified. That is a change that was, began in 2009 and went into place in 2012.
So, but in 2005, it just said, the towns could give them law enforcement authority.
Where did that come from in 2005?
That, I, you've seen that before, that's from the League, the League of Cities and Towns.
It's all citing VSA 256.
It's been circulated to the Board a number of times, it's, um-
So, the constant is that Constables didn't have law enforcement authority unless the town gave it to them?
That's the way I read it.
And at some point, it was required that they be certified, and I'm vague on when that-
That's right.
That's right, that's when they-
That's right.
That's what the League of Cities and Towns-
That's right.
So, but, it's like, as far back as 2005, it was the case that if towns gave law enforcement authority to Constables, those Constables had to be certified.
No, they did, that, that was the problem. Some towns, as I understand it, were allowing their Constables to go out and do law enforcement, and the state, and frankly, that put the Constables at risk. And the state stepped in at that point and said, "We've got a real problem here. We have a bunch of people running around, you know, with guns or whatever, and if a Constable is going to be performing law enforcement within a town, they have to be, go through this certification process."
And we do or we don't know when that became the state law.
Can't tell you precisely. If you want to spend a lot of time, I, maybe the best thing to do was get somebody from the League of Cities and Towns down or whatever to give you that change.
No, it went into place in 2012. I mean, it was delayed, and it was delayed. It was in 2010 where they talked about putting it into place, but there were enough, there was enough confusion that it actually didn't go into effect until 2012.
That was the change to, of requiring certification.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, so, it's always been the case that the Constables could exercise authority, police authority, if authorized by the town, and then last year, an additional state requirement at certification was added.
I don't think if authorized by the town. Substantively, if the town elected a Constable, he had it, or she had it.
No, but according to what Karen just read.
Well, so, the- Well, the first part of what Karen read says they have civil and criminal authority.
This is from the VLCT right here. "The role of the Town Constable varies from town to town and depends upon whether or not the elect, he or she is elected or appointed, and whether the voters have elected to limit his or her law enforcement powers. At one end of the spectrum, the Town Constable is the town's law enforcement officer, with all the powers of search, seizure, and arrest within the town. On the other end of the spectrum, the Constable has only the power to serve civil process, assist the health officer in the discharge of his or her duties, destroy unlicensed dog, kill injured deer, remove disorderly conduct, or people from a town meeting, and collect taxes if no tax collector is elected. Although there are no requirements that a locally elected Constable have criminal justice training, the voters may restrict law enforcement activity of those Constables who are untrained."
So, with that, if we were to, I would suggest-
I'd say there's a lot of disagreement about what we can actually do.
I think, I think what we want to do with regard to Three is, that reference to prohibiting them from exercising law enforcement authority, it should really say, exercising criminal law enforcement authority.
I, I, I don't know really the difference. I mean, what you're, you know, um-
Because I understood from the Sheriff that he could work with Constables as long as they were not trying to arrest or do criminal search and seizures, if they were doing civil matters.
Right, he, the traditional, the list that we read, which was the traditional role of a Constable, which is, again, enforcing the civil ordinances, you know, killing a deer that's been hit by a car.
I would just disagree with you. Maybe that's what you perceive to be the traditional-
I'm reading it. I've read it, there's a whole list of them.
I, I understand that, but in the very beginning of that, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, I can pull it up, give me the citation so I can pull it up. But I recall in the very beginning, you referred to civil and criminal.
I just went to VLCT.org.
Okay.
Under Constables.
So, I, so, yet again, we have a different interpretation from the League that's slightly different now from what Karen was reading from 2005. So, there's been a change in, in the staff and the municipal law center, municipal assistance center.
Well, let me ask the question I was asking last week, and it seems even more relevant now, since we all seem to have continued confusion about what is exactly the situation. What problem do we think we need to solve with a ballot article?
Well, for, for me personally, my, you know, my response would be-
24?
24, yeah.
I, I know that we have a situation right now with a Constable who-
I'm trying to find it.
I want to wait a minute, because we're clearly not listening over here. You guys want to?
I want to get to where I was before, you're going on, so I'd like to finish up where I was. But you can converse, I can-
No, no, rather you clarify your, in your head, across your hand.
You sure that's 24?
1936A, I'm looking, maybe 17.
17 VSA 2651, and Title 17, no, that's how to vote and elect.
Okay, then let me talk back.
It's 24 VSA, enumerate, it's the authorities.
Are you looking for Constable's powers and power of the-
You have the updated ones, Paul?
24 VSA, what?
It's the one I got off the computer that-
Is it 1936? Is that 1936?
Yeah, 1936A.
Yep.
Want to show that to Carl? Sure.
I'm there already, I don't need it, thank you.
Have you got it? Oh, you just pulled it up.
The VLCT confirms that a Constable who has law enforcement authority has a power to search, seizure, and arrest within the town.
When he has law enforcement-
I consider that has law enforcement authority has a power of search. Unlike other law enforcement officers, however, Constables do not have statewide jurisdiction.
Only if they are full-time certified.
So, when you say law enforcement authority, does that mean certification or authority from their municipality?
I'm assuming certification.
Can I have my bonus special?
I think there's a difference between certification and authority.
I do too.
Now, when, as a lawyer, Carl, when it says, "These include the power to serve,"
Which section are you in, under 1936?
Well, this is VSA, you know-
I'm in 1936A.
Yes, AB, I guess, I don't know.
AB.
They're talking about the certain powers. It says, "These include the power to serve civil or criminal process." What does that mean? Like, serve papers?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's-
Deliver-
Destroy, destroy animals-
Service a civil, criminal process, yeah, civil process, criminal process, same thing, yeah. Civil process is a, is a notice to appear and criminal process.
But criminal, you're asking the word criminal that I use. That was how I read it, criminal process, whatever that means. That's different, I think, from going to someone's house, because they get a call that there's a domestic dispute, and the Constable goes up to the house to arrest someone, isn't it?
Well, but here it says A, the town, a town may vote at a special annual meeting, may, to prohibit Constables from exercising any law enforcement authority.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, let's agree that if you need the town to prohibit any law enforcement authority, they must have law enforcement authority to begin with, before you're going to prohibit them from doing something. Otherwise, what are you prohibiting them from doing? They have no authority. So, they must have full law enforcement authority, unless the town prohibits them from exercising any law enforcement authority. Then, notwithstanding the provisions of subsection A, okay? Constables may perform the following, and then it goes on down, what you read. And then it goes to C, a Constable who is not, who is not prohibited from exercising law enforcement authority under the, under subsection A, so they've got it unless you tell them no, may transport a person arrested by the Constable for a violation of VSA so-and-so, a DUI, to police department, blah, 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 blah. So, unless we tell them no, he has that authority at five minutes to eight tonight. And he had it before we got here.
Wait, wait.
To do, to arrest somebody for DUI, for instance.
Unless he is prohibited.
Unless he's prohibited.
Right.
That's a criminal action.
But, but if he is prohibited, he can do all of those other things that are not law enforcement activities.
The historical duties.
The historical duties.
Sure, well-
Notwithstanding.
Notwithstanding, yes, yes.
Yes, so, so, that's, that's my point, is that historically, I'm just, I want the townspeople of Shaftesbury to be a part of this decision, because it is a change from what historically they have, how they have thought about their Constables. Historically, they have thought about their Constables as exercising the statutory duties that came under that notwithstanding, you know? And, and, you know, whatever the town decides, as far as I'm concerned, is the way we ought to go. And if it means getting rid of the Sheriff's contract, because they want their Constable to enforce full law enforcement in this town, and, you know, all the budget goes to him, then so be it, then that's the town's decision. But I do think, right now, and I know this from conversations with many, many people, there is a concern about it, and I do believe that the town has a certain idea of what their Constables are involved in, and it is not full law enforcement in the Town of Shaftesbury. Maybe we'll go that direction. But, and, and frankly, that could be happening right now if we had a Constable that was so inclined. And I think that that would be not what the town would be expecting to have happen. And I just feel as though they ought to be a part of that process, because it very clearly states that the authority should be coming from the town to allow them to do that, if that's what the town wants. Ken?
I think, with your Number Three, Four, and Five here, I would make the motion to go on the ballot just the way that's written. That gives the people, they're saying, just the way you've got it on the paper, on the draft.
Well, we're in the middle of a motion now, so you would be offering an amendment to add, no, that's fine, you would be offering an amendment to change what I said, which was put Number, Number Three on the ballot, to put Three, Four, and Five on the ballot.
Yeah, I saw Three, and Four, and Five, sort of that. Yeah, I saw three and four and five instead of that. I think, I think it covers everything that people would want to decide.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bob.
We're waiting for a second right now.
Well, I don't, yeah. Do we have a second or not? We originally had a second on that. Wait a minute.
We have Carl.
Are you offering an amendment to Tim's?
Yeah.
Okay, so we had a second and, okay. Does anyone, is anyone ready to second Ken's amendment, which would be to have all three on the ballot, include all three on the ballot?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
I will second it just for the purposes of discussion.
Okay.
Go ahead, make your point.
No, I think, I think that the items, as written, lay it out as clear, as clear as you can. And I think it gives the people the entire picture of what it is, and they get a yes or no on all of it.
And even though I seconded it, I disagree because I think it's confusing. We're all confused. And I made that motion earlier, and I'm inclined to vote against my own motion now just because I don't, again, I don't know what problem I'm trying to solve with a ballot article. Karen seems to be inclined that we need to give the people the, we need a ballot article to inform the people that their constable now has police authority unless they want to take it away. And I think my opinion about that is that our constable now has $200 a year worth of police authority, and I don't see that as a problem that needs to be addressed at this time.
I don't understand how, just for the sake of discussion, how a $200 budget would keep a fully certified law enforcement officer who already has all of the ability and weapons and whatnot to exercise law enforcement authority.
I don't think it prohibits him from doing that. I think, I think practically it prohibits him from doing very much of it just because I, he would be spending his own money and his own time in doing very much of it. I think the fact that we've got a constable who has law enforcement authority allows him to do something if he, you know, stumbles upon it. As Carl was saying, he finds somebody driving drunk, he can pull him over and arrest him before they kill somebody. But that doesn't mean that he's driving around looking for people who are drunk.
I, I have to say, in looking at the statute, I'm, I've got to be very frank, it's very confusing and contradictory because of paragraph A says, "The town may vote to prohibit constables from exercising any law enforcement authority." Then section D says, "Municipal legislative body may vote to allow a constable elected to exercise law enforcement authority, provided they've met these standards we've been talking about." So if you're going to vote to allow him to do it, why would there be a provision they'd have to vote to prohibit them from doing something? It's, it's contradictory.
Right. I, I, because frankly, we had the constables come before us, or the constable who has the law enforcement, and essentially say, "We can't limit his authority. We couldn't limit it."
And they don't-
He has it. Now, we could limit it-
If he was appointed.
If he was appointed.
But if he's elected official, he is a separate entity.
Right.
I, I don't think we even know if we could limit it if we appointed him.
Yes.
If we appoint somebody as a police officer, we don't-
Well, then he becomes almost like an employee of the town. And that's the concern that I have. If you're not, if, if you're looking at an appointed position with a fully certified law enforcement officer, I, I just, my feeling is that that opens up a whole can of worms because you're, you're allowing him to have law enforcement authority, which means, you know, you're looking at, again, things like an evidence room. If he collects evidence, that's got to be put somewhere. He has to be supervised on some level. The, I'm, I'm, I get concerned about me, you know, a, a police department in Shaftesbury.
I do too. I really think that, I would recommend that we vote both the amendment and my original motion down and not put anything on the ballot just because we don't know what we're talking about.
Well, you know, I don't think-
And I don't think we have an urgent problem we need to address. I don't think we have a problem with Paul. That's personal, I suppose, but I don't think we have an urgent-
The, all I can offer is, is, from having lived in different parts of the state, that there are other towns of this size that I've known from having lived here for 30 years plus or whatever, that as they've gotten bigger, and I'm looking at Windsor County towns, several of them, which are in the range of, in over 2,500, but let's say less than 8,000. So in the realm of around 3,800 to 4,000 to 4,500 people, they've, I've never seen anybody take the interim step of granting law enforcement powers or a portion thereof to its constables. They've always made the step to enter the police department. The administrative, they've taken on the administrative capacity to install a police department, even if it's with one policeman first, that's the chief, and then, and then the biggest issue always was, well, should we vote a cruiser in? And so that was the big discussion. The town of Setford, town of Norwich, I remember easing into this. And in one case, Norwich, because I lived the closest to Norwich, it was very problematic at first to oversee activities of one person. That's all I can offer, is that there, however, the town of Royalton, abutting Norwich, no, removed by one town, did in the late 90s and early 2000s take the route that Powell took. And there was, but there was one particular constable who was very interested in attending police academy, and he did become a fully certified law enforcement officer.
What did they do with the constable when they went to a, a police department?
Oh, they probably abolished the position.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
You mean in Powell? He's still a constable.
No, no, this would be elsewhere, except for Norwich, other places.
I've, I've been around Vermont for 50 years, and I've lived in a town where we've had constables, and we had one all my youth. Everyone knew who he was. He had full authority. He had a car. And then we had another constable, and he, they're always elected. So the select board and Wells did not have the authority over that constable. And, but I think after he was only there about a year, he got, he didn't get reelected. And the constable that's up there right now, they give him a small budget, and that's basically what he does. He's got his own car, a retired cruiser, and he works a full-time job. He cruises on weekends and Saturdays and, you know, weekends and evenings maybe, but for the most part, he's there.
You know, my, my concern frankly is, since 2009, we've had the constables coming to us asking for clarification on what their role is in town, the fact that they have no budget. And we've spent a lot of time talking about this, and I know it's a tough issue. I think ultimately it should go before the town. But again, that's, I, I would have voted for this amendment. We still, we will soon call the question. But I think that the townspeople have, frankly, I think a lot of people are tuned in on this. I think a lot of people have been listening to this discussion. A lot of folks know, you know, what they want or what they don't want. And I, I'm not afraid to put the question to them, and based on what the townspeople decide, if they want their constable to, you know, have law enforcement within the town of Shaftesbury, I think frankly it gives the select board more direction than, we're not going to get any direction from anybody else except for the town as to what the town wants. And if the townspeople say yes, then, you know, again, I think you start not to give them a budget. One of the things that we did do in this budget was say, "Well, you know what? We're going to be, bring this before the people, potentially bring it before the people, get some sort of reading, and our sheriff's budget runs through June 30th. And if the townspeople decide they want their constable to have law enforcement authority within the town, then the select board at that point is in the position of saying, "Okay, that, this is what the townspeople want us to do." And so now we've got $25,000 to work with, and gee, you know, now we have the ability to say, "Okay, we have a first and a second constable. Let's pay the money to have the second constable certified." And, you know, I, I think it allows for some real decisions and some real clarity around these positions because I frankly feel sorry for them every time they come before us. And now we're going to send them away potentially with no decision, and they kick it, you know, kick the can down the road. They've got no money, so, so what's the point? You know, we're out there saying, one second, Bob, I know your hand is up. Well, they've already got the law enforcement authority, but we don't have to worry because they can't do anything with it anyway because we're only giving them $200. What does that say to them?
May I take a shot at interpreting?
Just, just in one second, because Bob, I know, has had his hand up for a long time.
Have, have you people looked at the town's liability for the actions of the-
We, we have looked into the liability insurance.
Yes.
Yes.
If they're fully certified, if, if they are fully trained and certified, they're perfectly, they're covered with our liability insurance.
If I may take a shot at interpreting the statute because, believe me, I think the, the most important provision is at the very bottom, and I think it's been written in a strange way.
No surprise.
The very last paragraph, D, says, "A municipal body," that's us, "municipal body may vote to allow constables, elected or appointed, to exercise law enforcement authority in the municipality." Okay? We can do it. Let me, please, Bob. Provided, provided. My computer just run, decided to go down. Great. Come on.
Maybe Bob has the language.
No, I got the statute right here.
Let me see the statute. My computer's not-
Have that provided?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
What's with this? Provided, okay. We can allow, we may, okay, we don't have, we may allow a constable to exercise law enforcement authority, whatever that may mean, provided that the constable's not prohibited from exercising that authority, which you then have to go up to A, where the town would have to vote to prohibit them. Okay, so if the town hasn't voted to prohibit them anything, we may allow them to exercise law enforcement authority. Secondly, the constable has completed training. We know what we're talking about there. And here's the kicker. Three, "The exercise of law enforcement authority is conducted in accordance with the policies and procedures adopted by the legislative body, us, establishing the circumstances under which the authority may be exercised." So, we can allow a constable to exercise law enforcement authority, provided that he or she is complying with whatever policies and procedures we have adopted for them to follow.
And they have training.
And they have training, granted. But we, I don't know that we have policies and procedures that they follow. And then you go back to B, okay, which says, "Notwithstanding the fact that the town may vote to not allow somebody to do something," here are the things that may be performed by them. So in other words, I read this as saying, "We, the select board, as the legislative body, can exercise, can put together policies and procedures that would include, that may include any of the following duties: civil process, blah, 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 blah."
That's for elected and appointed?
Elected and appointed. So that's the, that's how you should read it, I think. And if the town doesn't like any of the things that we in our policies have allowed the constables to do, the town can vote to prohibit it. So, we may be putting the cart before the horse here because if we would have to put together policies, which we as a body would then vote to allow them to follow, and they could be any one of B, exercise civil process, destroy animals, all the stuff you read, any one of those, we may include, unless the town votes that they don't want them to do criminal procedure. For instance, be service as a criminal division of the superior court officer. So, so I don't think we have, I don't think, Bob, I don't think we have a policy in place yet that we're asking the town to vote against.
Well, you know, I, all I know is what the constable stated when he sat before us, which was essentially, he could right now, if he so choose, so chose, to be performing law enforcement at his own discretion within the town. Mitch, is that, was that your understanding?
That was my understanding, based on that first A.
So I'm about to change my opinion here based on trying to read this as clearly as I can, which says, "We, as the legislative body, set forth the policies and procedures, and the constable, elected or appointed, can exercise law enforcement authority, provided they comply with those policies, they're trained, and they're not otherwise prohibited by the town from doing them."
And do those policies, would they include certain types of activities?
They would include anything in B that you read to me.
Well, if that's, you know, again, I, I don't know. That's not the way our constable presented it, but maybe he has a misunderstanding of what his abilities are.
Well, he's probably got the same misunderstanding I had by reading the very first provision that says, you know, "A town may vote to prohibit constables from exercising any law enforcement authority," which gives a presumption that they have all the authority they need.
Right.
You have to get down to the very bottom to realize they only have the authority that we give them per our policies, or what's the other thing? Policies or procedures.
Okay. Let's vote on the amendment, or not the amendment.
Yes, David.
Did we have a second to the amendment?
We did.
Yes.
All right, all right. So let's, let's, all those in favor of the amendment to the original motion, the amendment being that all three questions would be placed on the ballot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. All right. That motion is defeated. Four against and one positive. The question then would be on the first question, which was-
Just put the first one on the ballot to prohibit authority.
Right. Shall the voters of the town, shall the voters prohibit its first and second constables from exercising law enforcement? All those in favor? Okay. The motion's defeated. So clearly, based on what Carl is speaking of now, I think we need-
Policies and procedures.
We need policy and procedures.
Well, and I think frankly, we ought to get, we ought to make contact with VLCT, whether it's the secretary of state. I think we owe it to our constables, and we owe it to the townspeople. We've been talking about this for a really long time. And now we're pulling up a last paragraph of something that, you know, I just think we need to discuss how we interpret that section that you just read, and if VLCT can help us with policies and procedures that can frankly allow the town to feel very comfortable about what their constables are going out there doing, what kind of authority they have.
This is very circular to me, sorry.
It's what?
Very circular about, I don't, having bandied this back and forth with various contacts at the league and then, I, I just feel like we're getting different rotations.
I think if you, if you read this, this law, paragraph D first, D, B, C, that's how it should be read.
Okay.
And then it makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
You know, some of this stuff, I think it was a guarantee- You know, some of this stuff, I think it was a Garrett, whose name I saw on some of these, Garrett Baxter. If you want to talk with Garrett Baxter, who's the attorney up at VLCT, Carl?
I'm not sure why I want to.
Well, because, again, he can help us with some, I think, if there are policies that this board is feeling they want to put in place.
I'm not suggesting that I want to put policies in place, I'm only saying that's really the starting point, if you read this, if that's what we're going to do. If you read it, we can vote to allow them to exercise law enforcement, as long as it is not prohibited by the town, and they're fully certified, and it's in accordance with our procedures, and then if they're not prohibited by procedures, the constables can perform the following duties, but a town may vote at a special meeting to prohibit constables from exercising any law enforcement authority. That's how it reasonably should be read, as opposed to the way they put it together here.
And on the VLCT, they offer a list of duties that a constable may perform under Vermont statutes, and it's, there's?
DBAC.
Yeah. DBAC.
DBAC.
Does this, does this board want to begin the process of formulating some sort of policies around the constable duties?
Well, if they're elected, Karen, we have no control over them, do we?
Well, I didn't think so, but Carl seems to be reading language that would indicate that we do.
Well, I take that back. We would have, we may not be able to call them to task because they're elected, but if they are not operating within the procedures and policies, then there may be a basis, if you will, to say that they, if you will, the town is not responsible for them because they're not acting within their authority.
Well, no, but then, to me, then that would mean all the more reason to put item five on the ballot, because then they're going to be appointed, and then we would have control over them.
I believe Carl said that whether or not they're elected or appointed was irrelevant for the purposes of that statute.
The statute says they have to follow the, that they are conducted in accordance with policies and procedures adopted by the body. Let's see, did it say, excuse me, allow, oh, yeah. "A municipal legislative body may vote to allow a constable, elected or appointed in another municipality, to exercise law enforcement authority." Elected or appointed in another?
Oh, that's very different.
No, it's even more confusing.
Very, very different. That's very, very different. Oh, God.
I mean, I think that the constable, if you're going to have them, it should be a two-year term anyway, whether it's appointed or elected.
I agree.
I agree with that.
So do you want to make a motion?
I would make a motion that?
To put number four.
No, five.
No, wait a minute.
Number five, what you would take out?
Yes, yes. But you would take out in the event that ballot article number four.
Right.
So you're suggesting we not, we not?
That you?
Question whether they wanted appointed. It remains an elected position, but do they want to extend the term?
Yeah.
Can you, do you want to put that in the form of a motion, Ken?
Boy, that's confusing.
Yeah, I believe that, I don't know how to word it, that the constables, whether elected or appointed, be a two-year term.
Well, we could just take out that first section and say, "Shall the voters of the town of Shaftesbury change the terms of its first and second constable?"
Yes.
From one-year terms to two-year terms is provided.
Take out the first, up to number four there.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Who is that? Mitch? Okay. Any discussion?
Send me the VLTC.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carl?
Yeah, aye.
You voted aye?
Yes.
All right. That's unanimous.
I'll abstain.
Oh, okay.
I'm too confused.
Well, I'm confused now, because frankly, we took a vote based on something that we thought was what it is not. And that was because towns do have the ability to contract with, to have, a constable is not allowed to perform law enforcement in any other municipality other than where they are elected, unless another municipality approves their, you know, their actions within their municipality. So in other words, we could ask the poundle, we could authorize the poundle constable to come up here and perform law enforcement within Shaftesbury, but he would have to abide by the policies and procedures in place in the town.
I think, I think we would have to appoint him. We'd have to change it from an elected to an appointment, and then we could appoint the poundle in that particular example you're giving.
I don't, I don't know. I don't, all I know is that I do, once you reread that reference and stated in another, from another municipality, it is?
That's what that constable does up in Dammie. He comes with a bunch of candidates.
Yes, that's right. More than one town can use the same constable, but clearly, there's other language that comes into play.
Even the language itself, elected or appointed in another municipality, could suggest elected by your municipality or appointed in another municipality.
That's right.
Doesn't necessarily mean?
But not their own. Not their own.
To allow a constable elected.
In another municipality.
It doesn't say, it just says elected or appointed in another municipality. So by using the word?
Elected or appointed.
You could read it differently.
You could read it either way.
I guess you could read it differently, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I think it's saying that if it's appointed.
And if you take that language to mean only applying to an elected or appointed from another municipality, and not somebody that's elected or appointed in your own municipality, you've taken away the requirement then for the training.
No, the state, that state statute.
No, that's state law.
That was changed.
Well, you know, again, I'm just, I think we're all confused, we're going to have to end this. I'm just going to make a statement, that had I not misunderstood that right there, then I would have supported the, I would have supported that ballot article for the townspeople to determine whether or not they wanted their constable to perform law enforcement duties or not. But we've already, we've already taken a vote.
Wait, what, the last motion from Ken was to place number five on the ballot?
Yes.
With the deletion of the introductory freeze.
That's right.
Now, the actual vote, all I know is that we had one abstention. Did everybody vote?
And the others were in favor, yes.
So that's on the ballot?
Yes. That will be on the ballot.
All right. Okay.
All right.
So number five. So what about three and four? Just leave them on.
Well, three, that was already voted down. That was, when the statement was read, and there seemed to be an understanding that we could somehow, as a municipality, have some sort of control over the authority that was vested in the constable. But that, I think, was misunderstood.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Okay.
And unless someone wants to recall the question, I think we're going to let it go.
Just in the interest of time, yeah.
Well, I don't care about the time, frankly. These are really important issues.
Well, yeah.
Just say, I am saying, if anybody, if there's a reason, then bring it forward. If not, then we will move on.
I will, I will call the, all you suggested, because it also doesn't make sense that you'd only have to require people from another jurisdiction to comply with your own rules when you don't necessarily have to have rules for your own people. It doesn't make sense.
So again, I'm not quite sure what it is that you're asking, you're saying.
I'm just saying that the language, I will call the VLTC, whoever the contact is, and clarify.
Okay.
Can I just do a check here? We, just so you know, we need to finalize the language so that we can post, I'd like to be able to post during the week, by Friday, because this has to be up by Sunday. Actually, no, the last, has to be up by, 30 days before town meeting.
Yeah, no, we have until the 30th or something, I thought.
Yeah, we have, if we can't iron this out tonight.
Well, we're just about there with the constables, Margie. We're just about finished.
You think so?
Yeah, I do, I do.
Oh, okay.
He's going to call the Garrett, but I think it's gone. I mean, I think the only thing that will be on this ballot, from what I'm reading from the board, is to extend an elected position from one to two years. Am I right?
Correct.
Okay. All right?
All right.
That's why I'm suggesting we move, I mean, I think what Carl is saying is he will speak with Garrett to try to, you know, this is not over. I think we need some clarity, because now we're going to appoint constables for two years, and we're telling them they can't do anything.
Elect them for two years.
Elect them for two years. So, you know, we need to?
Is that really what you want?
I think we still need to have some policies or procedures in place, if we don't have any for them.
Well, if they're not doing any more than they are, there's already pretty much black and white what they can do.
Is, do we have anything in writing as to what they can do that we say they can do?
We know that they can perform the statutory duties, the traditional statutory duties of a constable. We also know now that one of them can perform any law enforcement duties that he wants to. Okay? He can do it whether he has a budget or he doesn't have a budget. That's the situation we have right now.
I don't know that I agree with that, but okay.
It's what it is, as far as I see it.
Yeah.
I don't know what it is, that's just it, I'm.
I think we're on the verge of embarrassing ourselves. I think we need to?
I think we need to move on.
Go, stop talking about it, go research and find out what it is we're trying to do.
I agree, I'm, that's where I'm coming from. But also, I, what I would really like to see is the board commit to investigating the best way, you know, to encapsulate it in the bigger question of the best way to enhance community, or to enhance, or to provide community policing. It's sort of a bad way of saying, I think that people want a little more coverage, but we need to look at the community policing officer options as a whole.
Well, it is something that's going to have to come up.
That might include contracting with Bennington PD. It might include another alternative. And it also may result in just purely clarifying the constable issue.
It's going to have to come up before June, because we have a contract right now with the sheriff's department that only runs through June. So, you know, it's, the board in place at the time is going to have to, they're going to have to continue to wrestle with this, and?
And we're also putting a budget out there with zero, with only $200 for a constable budget.
That's right. That's right. So, okay, but we're moving on. So, Margie, I think you have your?
At the moment, I have?
Language for the warnings.
Well, I don't, because I don't think you addressed question number four. You didn't take any action on that.
I'm not putting it on the ballot.
Okay. You're just, not even voting, we're just going to take it off. Okay.
Right.
Right.
Right, because we determined that?
So the only one on the constables is number five.
That's it.
Mm-hmm.
Bob, did you have anything else to add?
Okay.
Not on that part, no.
Okay.
My thing was with Carl on that short D.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. Vermont Health Exchange enrollment changes. We had a couple of seeming glitches, I don't know that it's that.
They're not.
They're really not that problematic. We had extended, chosen to extend our present coverage through March, hoping that things would be smoothed out in terms of the health exchange, so that we could directly enroll, as we were told we needed to do. Because of the problems with the websites and the exchange, we've been told, because we are a small group employer, I guess, municipalities can contract or set up the plans directly with the provider. We had chosen Blue Cross Blue Shield. We had intended for the employees, we'd given a certain allowance for them to do their own shopping. It appears at this point that we now need to be negotiating, negotiating isn't the right word, because there's just?
We have to enroll with directly.
We have to enroll them directly with Blue Cross.
But we can only offer two plans.
Yeah.
We can only enroll in two plans.
Right.
And that's different.
Yeah. So we had chosen one plan that we funded a portion of, and I'm assuming, Margie, you're probably looking at what? The silver and?
I'm not looking particularly at anything.
Okay.
So we already approved?
Are we enrolling them or do they?
We already did one.
Blue Cross Blue Shield Gold, right?
Yeah. So this is, this is to alert you to that this has taken place, and we can put it on the discussion for the next meeting, more in depth, if we would like to, to take a look at another option, another plan.
I don't believe there's any real budget impact to the budget that we have warned at all, so it's just a matter of the process, I think, by which we get these plans in place for the employees.
Just have to enroll by February 21st, or an April 1st effective date.
And I think the only real decision is which two plans we ask Blue Cross Blue Shield directly to provide our employees.
Right, right.
And my opinion is that they should be the base plan, and I don't have the real name in.
The bronze? Bronze?
Gold, silver.
You mean our ba, what we had originally budgeted on?
That was a gold blue for you.
Wasn't it gold?
Gold blue for you.
Gold blue for you.
Yes, that we should offer gold blue for you, and the option that allows the one-up from that.
That?
The platinum, that the employees would have to pay into more to get to. And the only other choice would be to offer less coverage. I don't, I doubt that there's very many on the, on our crew that would want to go that way, but I did hear at least Terry say that he was considering buying up to the platinum plan.
Okay, so, Margie, we'll, I think we should put this on maybe the?
For the February 3rd, just so everybody?
First February meeting.
Goes back and reviews the plans, and?
Yeah.
Yep.
If you have made?
We have Tim, we have the spreadsheets that we had done.
Well, I'm assuming you'll have made contact with Blue Cross to find out what it is, I mean, can our employees do this, or are we having to do it for them? Can they choose their plan, again, knowing what it is that we are?
That's a good question.
Are offering, and then let them go and make the purchase. So maybe some of that groundwork can be done before February 3rd. Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
We'd have to vote on that by the, I mean?
That night.
Yes, that night.
Yeah.
Right, right. But hopefully, we can have the?
They have to enroll by the 21st.
Right, so if we can have that information prior to that.
That's what it says here.
Okay. Tim, you had been to a school board meeting. I've been reading a little bit about it.
Yeah. The, I'm not going to report on what was in the paper today, because I don't know any more than what was in the paper today. That was not discussed at the school board meeting that I went to. But yes, the bottom line that I read from the paper was, it looks like Shaftesbury Elementary School taxes are going to go up around three and a half cents, 3.6, something like that was the breakdown I saw.
Well, that's the whole schools, the whole, our tax, school tax, that includes the MAU, everything.
Elementary and high school and junior high. It was one cent and eight cents, and that was, that was how it was going to pan out for?
Total impact.
Shaftesbury Elementary, yeah. The point of the article seemed to be that it varied from school to school around here quite a bit.
Right, right.
Town to town, for sure.
Yeah.
The significant things that were discussed at the last school board meeting, again, the District One question came up, and recall that the District One question is, the people in Shaftesbury who pay their school taxes to North Bennington, which is now a private academy, a couple of members of the school board are pushing, of our school board are pushing? a couple of members of the school board are pushing, of our school board are pushing to change that situation and reincorporate that District One into Shaftesbury. So, those people would, um, become, again, Shaftesbury residents for the purposes of school and school taxes. The significant thing is that the, the school board, uh, approved a motion to hire a lawyer and spend up to at most $3,000 to pursue that option. So, they are, they are serious about that. Pat Harris, current member of the school board, is not running again. That was the only op, um, absence or vacancy that was indicated would be coming up. I'm not sure who the others are, but apparently they all plan to run for reelection. Uh, the school board is still waiting to hear from the teachers' union about having open negotiations towards the next teacher contract. That's been something that's been pushed strong by Fran Kenny on the school board for some months now and the, uh, the teachers' union has yet to indicate whether or not they are agreeable to that.
That in lieu of closed-door negotiations or...
Yes, in lieu of the situation that occurred during the strike where all the negotiations were happening behind closed doors and both sides were coming out telling us different stories about what was going on behind closed doors. That's all I have for the school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Tim?
This is not an action room, this is...
The weight limit reporting.
I, I, I just want people to know that each year, um, we receive a request from the state, from V-Trans, whether or not we want to report to it any special weight limits that exist on our roads, of which we have none in Shaftesbury. And, uh, so I, there's no report that we actually submit because we don't have no bridge or road posted below state limits. But we do have that option. And it would entail a lot of, again, public discussion, perhaps. And the only reason I'm bringing it to your attention is because of the road conditions that we have seen this particular winter with the freeze thaw cycles and, um, because of the depth of the ruts that we see and that we've basically been very agreeable. The town's been very uninterested to date in issuing overweight permits, which it could do to authorize carriers to travel at certain restricted weight limits if we so chose. And, and it's, it's just, um, an ability that you have out there to you. So, that's all I need to say right now. I think that, uh, what we've seen so far with the freeze thaw cycle is just more evidence of how all Vermont roads have expanded over time on old stagecoach roads and that with today's weights and, and use that are the base on a lot of our dirt roads, our gravel roads, is really insufficient. So, um, when Terry next meets with you, I think you'll, you'll hear that he's very interested in perhaps, uh, replacing some of what we thought we would do with our capital improvement fund and devote a lot of what we would have in our budget only to Murphy Hill in that section to, as the approach to the hollows was very difficult. So, that was the reason of having that on the agenda.
Do you still post roads, Margie? It used to be.
Yeah, you can do mud season postings and I would encourage that we do that.
I, I think it's not a bad idea. I mean, I know out by me, boy, we have got, there is so much logging that's going on and, and Glastonbury Road is a disaster. I mean, you, you know, when you have tandem full logging trucks coming down probably eight trips, 10 trips a day, it, it wreaks havoc. And I feel badly for the guys because frankly, I see them, you know, they'll come and they'll grade and then people start screaming, "Why are there so many ruts?" You know, "Why is this a..." And I, and I can see it. I can see that logging truck coming right by my house and, you know, it's...
Yeah, but a logging truck can, can, can go 20,000 pounds heavier than the equivalent dump truck.
Wow.
Just for registrations. That's the way they are.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they have a special rate where, I mean, if I went out with that kind of a load, I'd never get out of jail.
Well, it's, it's because it's, it's spread out farther.
Well, yeah.
It's not a dump truck, that's why it's not...
They put them out trailers on them too.
Yeah.
With the, with the boom on the front and the back and, I mean, you gotta, you could have 100,000 pounds there.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's, I mean, it, it is, it's a heavy weight to do a job on the roads.
Would you like us to seriously consider mud season postings?
Well, I mean, if you get, you know, when you get a season like this, you could post a road for a week and it gets cold again, like it's gonna be zero all week.
I know.
And if that's gonna save your road, there's, I would, I would be certainly in favor of that.
Yeah, yeah, I think we should look into it.
Okay.
And then we've got the highway mileage.
Now, the highway mileage report for new board members is, confirms, uh, the mileage that's been mapped and reported to the Agency of Transportation. And that is the, the basis of our state aid allocations for Class III roads. And, um, that, I, I didn't have time, having to be out of town this weekend, to actually get you that report. So, I'll have that on the agenda for the 3rd.
Well, that hasn't changed anyway, has it? The mileage?
We did not adopt or discontinue any roads in the last year, so it's the same mileage as last year.
Yeah.
But you still do need to sign it.
Yeah, green road won't count much.
No.
What's the deadline? We have a deadline for that, right?
It's the very end of February.
Okay.
So, we're all set.
All right.
Now, the public hearing schedule, I need your input because I don't know what you want to do for meetings. It has to do somewhat if you feel like you still wanna have a informational meeting on ballot items. I don't know if you do. The earliest with at, at least a 30-day warning to the butters involved with Don Green Road puts us out to the last very end of February for hearing date. I can't make Monday, the 24th. So, now we're into, the following meeting would be town meeting night. You could have, well, you'd have to have an organizational meeting after that, maybe on the 10th. So, it looks like the 17th of March would be the, the hearing date.
Further down, discontinued.
Yes, yes.
How many, how many public meetings do we need to do?
Just the one.
Just one?
Yeah. Then you write your findings and decision. You have 60 days in which to do that and you issue your, your decision by certified mail and we send it back.
Okay, is the board agreed?
Yep.
Date, okay.
And the only item in my report is about the revised bid from Clean Harbors that I did finally receive. And, uh, it's under, it's less than...
Right.
End pros. It's under $10,000 and, uh, which is nice, we saved ourselves a couple thousand. And I, I would encourage the board to decide whether it wants to warn, warn this formally for action on February 3rd or just go ahead and...
I make a motion we warn it for action on February 3rd.
Okay.
The action of oil contamination.
Good. So, I let my proposers know.
If we get any decision that we're gonna dispose of that tank, not do it anymore, or what are we gonna do?
That is cutting up, that is cutting up the tank and removing everything, right?
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is. It's all gonna be...
And then, you know, I think the board then has to decide going forward, are we gonna continue to collect used oil?
Well, that was, yeah, that was what I meant.
Yeah, that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
And, and that, the board's gonna have, I don't think we're gonna decide that tonight, but, um...
We can't spread it on the road?
No, because that's a whole other area of research.
We can't spread it down the road?
Conspenment.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we did it for a lot of years.
Yeah, yeah.
Which would be eleven worth now.
Yeah.
Or worse.
Any second to my motion?
Do we need a motion to have, to have it on the ba, on the agenda?
No, I'll just put it on.
No, we don't need it for the agenda, yeah, yeah.
Anybody? So, the warning is going to have to be redrafted and then signed.
And that, when does that have to be posted by, Margie?
Well, we can post within 40 days or 30 and I certainly would like it, February 3rd's too late because it has to be up.
Okay, so we need a, we need a special meeting then?
Just to approve the warning. Now, it, it does not mean that everybody would have to be here in physical form. You can actually host a conference call.
Well, yeah, I mean, have we, okay.
And you do need to sign it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, is there a reason that we cannot approve this warning?
As revised.
Right now, as we revised it?
As revised, you can do that.
Because the only issues that we had, we've already discussed and we've already voted on.
That's right.
So, I mean, I would suggest that we vote the warning as amended and, Margie, you do it up.
Then we, and then, but you're gonna all have to come in and sign.
And we come in for signatures.
Yep.
Yeah. Does that work for everyone?
That's fine.
So, is Carl getting some clarification?
I'm getting some clarification tomorrow.
So, therefore, I don't think we can...
Well, okay.
That's right.
The clarification is not...
Clarification, I was not interpreting that that clarification was the work, gonna be actually on the ballot. I thought we were talking about having informational material available to people.
Right.
But not that it would specifically be on the warning itself.
I wasn't expecting it to be on the warning, it was a separate document.
Okay, so then I think we can go forward with this. All right? So, I, Margie, then, I guess what we need is, do we need to read the whole warning?
No.
Okay.
No.
You've all read the warning.
Yep.
And we've voted on the business to be transacted by Australian ballot. So, I would ask for a motion...
We should probably go through it just to make sure that...
Okay, I'll just review it. No changes to page one. That's, this is the business to be conducted on the floor. Changes begin on page two, transact, business to be transacted by Australian ballot. The first article will be, shall the voters of the town of Shaftesbury approve the following amendments to the Shaftesbury zoning bylaws? There will be a sub A question, yes, no, a sub B question, yes, no. Moving on to Article Two, that will read, shall the voters of the town, uh, shall the voters of the town of Shaftesbury, um, authorize amendments to the zoning bylaws?
Future amendment.
Future, to the future amendments to be zo, yes. As, as Rob amended it, future amendments to the zoning bylaws to be adopted by a majority vote of the select board as provided by 24 VSA Section 44, two, sub C, one.
Right, we're making no changes to Rob's recommendations.
Correct.
No.
Correct.
Then, the next question will read, shall the voters of the town of Shaftesbury change the terms of its first and second constable from one-year terms to two-year terms as provided by 17 VSA Section 2646, sub seven?
Now, if I speak with the fellow tomorrow, whatever his name is regarding...
Garrett, yeah.
Will that serve any purpose for purposes of what we put on the ballot? I mean, other than...
No, I think you might ask him, are we, would we be allowed to have an informational sheet that could...
No, 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 that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the fellow from BLTC, is that whom I'm talking to?
Right.
About the constables?
Oh, about the constables.
Well, I know that, we had decided that before...
And you said we covered the question.
That has nothing to do with what we're putting on the ballot now. I mean, I would think that you would probably wanna talk with Garrett for going forward. That, that, because frankly, again, now we could potentially have constables for two years and we don't know what they can do. They don't know what they can do.
Okay, so it has something to do with this, it's merely what we, we need to do for them or what they can do by themselves?
I think so too. I, I think so, yeah. I think we need to clarify their role in Shaftesbury. And then, after that, we're all of the appropriations.
Then on that, we move right into, uh, what will, we'll renumber. But you have, uh, the appropriations to the audit reserve, coal hall equipment reserve, fire warden truck reserve, fire truck reserve, garage reserve, parks reserve fund, paving reserve fund, sidewalk, cemetery culvert reserve fund and hook veteran, veterans memorial reserve fund. And, uh, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 articles as reflected in our budget. Then you would move on to a renumbered section, uh, to vote up or down the community appropriation requests. And that's it?
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the warning?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Did we get that? I don't know. I think Tim and Carl both, we'll, we'll, we'll give it to Carl. Carl and Mitch, how's that? Both like... Any questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay, so, Margie, you'll ha, you'll let us know when that's ready?
Yeah.
For signatures?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, is that it? Margie, do you have anything else?
Not at the moment.
I will revise...
The budget report.
I will revise the select board report based on the actions that we took tonight and get it out to everybody tomorrow morning. Hopefully, you can have a chance to look at it, again, change any, any of the changes that I make. I would like to have it to the auditors by midweek. And Margie and I will be working on the budget notes and the budget guide and also sending that out this week. So, if you can take a look at those and send in your edits or suggestions, that would be really helpful as soon as you can when you get it, okay? Ken, do you have anything else?
Nope. Tim? The, uh, the voters' guide that I offered to do about the zoning changes.
Yes.
Do you want that in the town report?
Do you think you can get it together that fast?
How fast do you, would that be?
By the end of the week?
Yes.
Because you can, what I'd ask is that you take a look at the, you know, closely, the writing that's already in there, under zoning and planning in the select board report. And I, you know, I don't wanna duplicate our efforts, but, um... Because there's a lot of information in there about it now. And just, you know, whether, I don't know if we want to put it in the context of the select board report or I don't know where else it would go, frankly. We'd be asking the auditors to do another section, which is fine if the board decides that. We could have, you know, an addendum perhaps to the select board report that is informational for ballot warnings. Do you have any thoughts, Margie, on that process? I mean, it would probably be an extra page, perhaps. I, I don't know, I don't know what... Do you have any thoughts, Carl?
No.
I mean, I, what I don't wanna do is not get enough on information out there that makes it easier for them to make a decision, so... I do think we should have a handout on it that's available here at Coal Hall that's, that can be accessed off the website.
This is a very limited question. I mean, you're talking about the constables?
No, he's talking, we're talking about the zoning bylaw issue.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not talking constables.
Each one or just the urban rural?
All of the zoning questions, we felt we needed to have some sort of voters' guide to explain why they're on the ballot and what their merits are and, uh...
I'm assuming we're not going to even ask them a question about... I'm assuming we're not going to be even asked them a question about, it could be on the ballot, but other, because we seem to have that answer from, from the Secretary of State's office. I was thinking of a separate informational sheet.
Yeah, no, not on the ballot. Why those questions are on the ballot.
We've already had public hearings, so I don't think we are supposed to go out there and argue again about the merits of the fact that we already approved these amendments. I, I think it's only really about the question of how we adopt.
I think we do need that information out there and, because we don't want people to vote against those two things just because they don't know what they're about.
Oh, boy. See, I think you open up a hornet's nest by being, trying to, I don't know.
So you think we should just leave it at, we're correcting-
I think it's just a procedural.
Correcting procedural defects.
That's all.
It's just a check in a box, okay.
But, and so the attention, I would, I would think, would be on two.
Okay.
That we really believe that that should be by majority vote.
If we, if we provide something about an explanation for any one of them, then I think you have to provide an explanation for all of them. Including probably the one on the constables, what the impact is.
Well, for Tim's sake, how would you guide him and what would you say, what would the general scope of information be about amendments to a bylaw that have already been adopted? Would you just, now, the Planning Commission, in its transmission of those bylaw changes, has to send to the board a report on the, what the impact of a bylaw amendment is. And so we have official Planning Commission reports and then we have all our public hearing testimonies.
Mm-hmm.
And then, so what we're doing is going to be regurgitating and there's sort of editorial prerogative once again about what that was all about.
Yeah, well, I thought the, I thought when I read those is, I don't know what this is about because I wasn't, I wasn't here or I wasn't paying attention when they were originally adopted.
They weren't even around, yeah. They're on the website in form. I mean, we have the actual amendments as adopted and the Planning Commission's summary of what is meant by the adoption. We know exactly what section was amended.
Well, do we think it will be sufficient to say to the voters, we're correcting a procedural defect in these two zoning laws, they were adopted by the select board instead of by the voters as they should have been? And then on the next one, how about we do them all that way?
That would make sense because that's all that's happening.
We, it, we've, it's sort of in the select board report already.
Okay.
I mean, I, you know, if, if you all want to read it again and based on this evening's discussions, change that, but that is, that is in there right now under planning and zoning for the select board. But I'm happy to have you change the wording if you feel it's not clear enough.
No, I was really volunteering out of Carl's concern a while ago for-
Some sort of a handout.
Some sort of a handout.
I think that we should have, the only concern I have is that if we get a non-planning commissioner, non, you know, somebody that hasn't really been as involved in the past, Tim.
I might not be the right person to do this. I was just volunteering out of the goodness of my heart and the fact that I might have more time than other people to do it, but-
Right.
I can try and take a shot at it, but again, I, I think, I don't think the report would be, the report is very useful in general, but people that are going to be going into the voting booths are not going to have probably a copy of the report. And I just want the people to be able to vote and know what they're voting for as opposed to, "I don't know what this means, I'll vote yes here, no there, yes here, no there."
You know, when I, well-
I think I'm hearing that it doesn't need to be, that I don't need to get something into the, the report, so.
I don't think, I don't think we need a separate section in the, if we have it, it's in the select board report. But, but again, I would invite you to once again read that report and I, I will send, send it with some revisions tomorrow, but-
Well, how about we take a little time to think about what we want in a voters' guide?
Yeah, because we have time. We do have time. I mean, again, we could put it in the banner, we can get it on the website, we can have it down here on the, on the counter if we feel that it's vital enough to get that information out to folks that, you know, they won't know what they're-
You know, if anything, Tim, it might be really helpful to have the historical, just a brief encapsulation of the historical votes that we've had in the past and we could show a little bit of inconsistency. And this is why we need to address this matter and the select board recommends. I mean, if we can say that back in 1987, we voted this way and then these bylaw amendments were adopted as, in this way from X to X, you know, maybe that's what we'd want to do.
Again, my thought was mostly something that somebody could quickly read as they're, as they're about to vote, so less is more.
Well, I will take that, that I don't, I'm not going to try to get anything into the select board's part of the report, town report, and then we'll, we can-
Well, don't do anything until I find out whether or not, you know, this is truly verboten.
Okay.
Right. But take a look at what we already have in the select board report again on that issue.
Yes, you explained it, you explained it well.
Thank you. Anything, Mitch, from, anything else that you have?
No.
Okay, Carl?
No.
Margie, is there anything else? Okay, thank you all. I think that I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, I think we're all in favor, right?
Aye.
Oh, thank you, everybody. That was a-